We'll open up our work session. Please silence, shut off your cell phones if you would please. Join us in the pledge and allegiance. Mr. Robertson, would you need this, please?
The flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, uh...
Here. Considering the tragedy that happened yesterday, I would just like to have a few seconds of silence. Just pray to ourselves, if you don't mind.
So we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you, Commissioner. And so, moving on along, uh, we don't have no additions at this time. You are recording for the record.
Yes.
All right. So, uh, we have nine o'clock. Kevin Hawk, Road Department Vehicle Purchase. So Kevin, uh, to stay on the agenda, let's get you in and out here. Uh, this is work session. This is for discussion today, action tomorrow, possibly action tomorrow. So, the floor is yours, Kevin.
Uh, good morning, Commissioner. Are you hopefully seeing four, the four sets of quotes that we put out?
Yes, yep.
So we tried to get, um, many different options here in working with four different vendors. Um, and I listed that language there on the agenda. Quotes were requested for a box elite pricing, a reg, which, uh, pickup with a regular box, a cabin chassis, which I didn't understand exactly. The cabin chassis is in the truck quite a bit longer. But then also, if the company or vendor were able to put a service body on, um, as we're entertaining things to try and make these trucks have as many purposes, I guess, as possible. So with what we found, mechanically speaking, um, if you look at the four quotes, uh, the two Ford vendors, Ford doesn't offer a manual four-wheel drive lever, which we, uh, in discussions with the mechanic and so forth, their system is a vacuum system, electronic. And we're not totally sold that that's gonna be as user-friendly and hold up as well as a manual four-wheel drive engagement for both plowing snow, which is what most of the priority is with pickups, and for the neutral function of the transfer case, which is in tow mode for the gravers. So you saw the pricing, um, recommended going with, uh, the Dave Smith, um, Dodge pickups, which were forty-eight thousand, four hundred thirty-three dollars. Two of those would be ninety-six thousand, eight hundred sixty-six. Is there any questions?
I do not have none. I appreciate that you followed the rules, got all the quotes, and understand your need for, uh, the transfer case to be appropriate. So I, I have no questions.
Yeah, no questions for me.
So Kevin will act on that tomorrow. That's a budget, builder's budget is right now. So, uh, we'll act on it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
All right. No other updates or anything at this time, Kevin?
Uh, I would like to mention, if I could, take a few minutes just to kinda tell everybody what, what we're doing now that our summer activities came to a close and we finished up bulk sealing and so forth. And, um, in review of all that, we, we actually were able to, um, increasingly each year become more efficient. We're, we're less than seventeen thousand dollars a lane mile for our oil and chip and bulk sealing. So couldn't be happier about that. Um, we did just shy of sixty miles here this summer. So seventeen thousand is a very good number. We're moving into, right now, we crack sealed for the last six weeks, all in the North Lake, Christmas Valley Highway, uh, oil dry, all roads that will be resurfaced next summer. And working on the prep work for all of those drainage. There's a lot of pipes on Christmas Valley Highway that, um, you don't actually recognize that may have been there until you walk the road. So finding a lot of needed maintenance. And we're also running the Vanway machine and utilizing currently, last weekend, this week, the dollars that we were able to acquire from New Sun to rehab the pitcher lane that was, uh, tore up during the cruise solar development. So wanted to update on those couple things. The last update would be East Bay Road should be today, finishing up the contract date. And the final inspection then is tomorrow. We hope to put line paint on and have the shoulders on by the end of next week so we can bring that project to its closure. It is turning out very well, so.
Very good. Um, comment on your chip sealing at seventeen thousand, seventeen plus per mile? While that's great, you anticipate, uh, prices on oil and everything stay down for this next budget year? Or you think that we might be, that being going back up a little bit?
Well, I, I'm, I wonder about the cost ever really going down. But, um, it, to pry on oil vendors and try to get information out for the future is, is very tough, as you know. But, um, we, we work at that consistently throughout the year. The asphalt index drives a lot of that. And I think today's national events may have something to do with that as well. So it's hard to say. But we, we can only hope that that is the case. Um, the cost associated with that price also helped a little bit in that, quite a bit of the aggregate, I wanna say probably forty percent of that aggregate was material that we traded, um, even, you know, doing, doing these trades from still the dog lake material from the recycled asphalt. So we had some cost savings, uh, in that aggregate, you know, cost itself, which helps keep the cost down. But everything helps, so.
Yeah, well, very good. I, just a few years ago, we were, my numbers are correct, we was about twenty-two thousand per mile, so. I might be wrong on that, but I see like that's about what a chip ceiling was a few years back.
Yep, we're, we're doing, we're doing as many things as we can to keep the cost down so we can continue to be in that business and do as much of it as possible, so.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks for the time to allow me further updates. I appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you, Kevin.
All right, Kevin, thank you.
Yeah, have a good day.
All right, so I see a lot of public came in today. And I don't think it's on an agenda item. So, um, I do have, uh, unless I'm mistaken, I have a couple other things here I'd like to take care of before public. Everybody here, everybody here for the same reason, because very rarely we get this many people in charge working. Okay, so I'm going to, on our agenda, I'm going to take care of the next three items and then move on here from you guys. All right. Normally, our public, uh, public comment times on Wednesdays. So, uh, if not, it's supposed to get on the agenda. We're pretty lenient here. And nobody's talked to me about what everybody's here for. So we'll keep from the hip. So we're covering these other three things and move forward. So, and we're up next, the Lake County Health Department Service Monitoring Policy.
Good morning. Uh, recently, our Public Health Department went through, uh, a review from the state, I think it was specific to our WIC program. But it brought up a few concerns that the state had that we are doing like housekeeping items to clean up on. And both of these policies came out of that review. We are under contract with the Lake Health District to provide our public health programs. So even though our contract states how we will monitor their activities and watch their financial statements and things, the state wanted a separate policy other than just the contract. So both of these policies attempt to meet the state's needs. The first one, the services monitoring policy, um, just talks about who we will contract with and how we monitor that. It doesn't go into a lot of detail on the financials. This policy was provided by the state as an example. And so we really used their template, put in the Lake County and our local public health authority where we needed to. Any questions on that? And it's pretty, it's pretty short and sweet.
No, but maybe I didn't quite hear correct or not that this follows, follows basically what our contract requires also.
Yes.
But it's a separate.
But it's a separate policy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. It's an actual monitoring policy. Because the state actually requested or wanted us to have it.
Yes, yes.
And so, uh, reading here to make sure, because I, it's a great thing, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
Who is one that has to report to the county? Is it the Public Health Director or is it the...
The subcontractor, so it would be the health district.
It would be the district, okay. Also, I don't see it yet. Yep. Very good. And they're aware of this contract also?
Well, once we get this policy approved through our formal process, we will have that public district review and start following the policy as well. Will be Judy Clark is our local public health authority to, um, ensure that the policy is followed.
Right, so most of this is in the contract anyway?
Exactly, exactly.
So if I see that it's three updates per year. And having this policy in place run like it keeps us in compliance, but it's also the tool to say, besides your contract, we want those three updates, which we probably haven't got those from the district themselves, from the health director, yes, but from the district person.
Now, you'd be good to clarify that.
Yes. Yep. Very good.
And that, that one also, you know, requires the financial reports quarterly as well. But it's pretty, pretty fun, using more of the finances.
Okay.
The next one, um, unless you have more questions about that? So...
Not really any questions. Uh, the service monitoring policy is excellent. We would appreciate all the work that you've put into this.
Okay, let's go on to the subrecipient.
The subrecipient monitoring policy is actually going to impact more than just our public health contract. This would actually require us as a pass-through agency with any federal funds to follow this policy. Um, both public health and mental health, we do pass through federal funds. There are other grants that we receive that we would just pass through. And this is, this talks about deciding if it's a pass-through or a subcontractor as well. So let me give you some examples. Um, both mental health and public health are completely pass-through. We don't actually sit down and determine what services they're gonna provide other than to meet the contract. They get to determine how to structure all that. So in contrast, our Bureau of Justice grant, that's federal through the Adult Department Corrections, they subcontract with mental health on what services and when and how to provide those specific things. So this, this subrecipient monitoring policy looks at both of those scenarios a little bit differently and then requires action on, on those differences. Uh, we should probably have been doing this for a while. So it's nice that the state's, okay, let's actually formalize how you guys are going to monitor anybody that receives federal funds from you. Um, this just makes it much more clear on what we need to do and when. It is going to take some more work, though. It will take some time and work.
So whenever I was reviewing this, it just looks like it's quite a bit more work. So question is, is Road Department federal fund?
Yes.
Special transportation?
Federal fund.
With, so those two come to mind. What other ones are you thinking that, that will hit on the federal fund?
And then it depends on different classes. Like, you know, railroad, our, on the airport, like, any time you get specific federal funds. Yes.
And, and public health, for example, leaving those subcontracted out. Um, the WIC program is almost entirely federal, even if those pass through the state at first.
Yeah. And what's interesting is even when dollars come through the state, we are required by federal law to still recognize that as federal funds. And so that state contract with public health, actually, it's about eighty, eighty percent of that whole contract is federal funds.
And so, uninitiated, the subrecipient monitoring policy.
The state review.
The pol...
The state review of our public health.
Okay. And so, and I'll jump back to special transportation. Um, this will be added duties upon Melanie or that department. I would hope that on the administration side, we're able to show that and capture some possible, because this looks like it's gonna be quite a bit of work.
Well, and special transportation may be able to not, they may decide that the people that are providing those services for us are actually like vendors that we're paying to do the service, which is a little bit different than a subrecipient that we're passing through the dollars and they get to decide how and when and where to provide the service. I think special transportation, we actually kind of dictate that they do these services and when. So that's a different monitoring than actually just handing over the federal dollars and say, you, you get this done for us.
And then we jump over to the airport, FAA dollars and all of that. And, and I, I know we have to do it, but just a lot more work than we have.
Well, and sometimes it is being done, but not through a policy like this. FAA has so many policies and so many requirements on even our engineering contract, our construction contracts, all those things that we, in essence, are doing this under FAA dollars, um, already. So it's not going to affect every single federal funds we receive. But it does affect, you know, public health, mental health. It could affect the Road Department if they were to completely subcontract out a whole, a whole federal project. I don't really see that happening. I mean, they follow their contract laws and they're using federal dollars to pay someone. So I, it's not going to affect that too much.
Okay.
In Section B, under Subsection Five, perform on, uh, to perform an onsite review of the superintendent of the subrecipients program operations. What is that? How often is that? That doesn't, it's not really spelled out. Is that an annual thing or is that frequently throughout the year?
I think with this policy, it's designed to allow a little bit of flexibility. So once there's a this level determined about who the subrecipient is, you may say, based on this survey that they filled out, we may be to monitor.
On-site.
On-site more frequently than not. So, so that's, it depends on who we're passing the dollars through.
Lot, lot of things going through my head. So our bill payments, federal dollars. And we no longer do that, but one time we pass some of that through to one of our departments. That would have fell underneath the subrecipient. Or would it not be, that's a county department?
It's a county department.
Okay, all right.
Um, one last thing on that. The very last page of the first section pages, or actually, I guess it's actually page one of the, let me see. I was curious about that because it's listed Coos County, third paragraph?
Well, there you go. It was a template in my head.
No worries.
Can I make Coos County responsible for it?
I, yeah, exactly.
Hey, Coos County.
They can, we'll have a motion in a second.
Again, the state, the state helped us with some template, both of these policies.
Yeah.
And I should also clarify, Jim Bailey had reviewed both of these and he gave a thumbs up on them, so.
Thanks, man.
I'm gonna do this office as well.
You guys comfortable back coming in tomorrow?
Yep. Yeah, as long as this is not acting on Coos County business.
Yeah.
I said most reflect it. All right, and that's all I have down here. Did you have anything else?
I do not. Not at this time.
Thank you. And Dave, we're gonna get you taking care of the, you get back to work also. And you will go to the public.
Good morning, dwellin' sir. I'm just here on the ratification before the ground lease. Reduce very special consideration. Morel, Morello Construction has put a water line through down Am Street down to Nine Star Drive. And they were needing a staging area to stage their equipment. So we have that property on the end of eleven, the Am Street, one point nine six acre, two acres, basically. Uh, we leased to them to, uh, to stage their equipment while they were doing this project. In lieu of rent, they will be taking all the filters and filling our industrial park lands to, where we can make it usable down the road near around the end of the Blackman Street. So, uh, we could, uh, give these trees special consideration. Ground lease, the other form, in lieu of rent, will be the engine and the work leveling and takes an arc of the work down that thing is, who has to apply?
Questions?
I think me.
So you, you said ratification, they're actually using it, but this is actually signing the contract.
Yes, they've already signed. But I told them before we could sign it, I had, yeah.
So you, or that they're already using it, you would like first act on this today?
Yes.
Take care of it?
This was, this commenced on October one.
Uh, we, uh, October nineteenth. October eighteen. So I, I'm, Dave, thank you for giving this range. One thing that's very much positive about it is down there, there's been some piles of dirt there for years that have not been taken care of. This will take and help, uh, some of the county-owned, uh, pieces of industrial park bring them up to another standard. Plus one, the two-acre lot will have two problems and such things. And I think it's a great trade off. I think your negotiation is great. Appreciate that. I would like to act on this today.
Sure.
Do you entertain the motion?
I'll, yeah, I'll entertain or whatever.
Recommend that we ratify, a lot of, all rat, uh, the motion that we ratify is special ground lease from Morello Construction.
Okay. Motion's made, the second to ratify and sign the contract to special ground lease with Morello Construction. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll get that signed right away. If you have an original, hit it to us. Um, Melanie, it'll be off.
And if I gave Melanie, we resolve, I need one.
Yes, good.
Aye.
All right. And so, everybody, thank you for adulting. So my guess is everybody's here on solar. Looking at, is here. Um, so we don't have an agenda item on that.
So, uh, Chair, so just real briefly, I think I may have been with that communication or something we had locked in on the last couple days. And this was supposed to be on the agenda. To my knowledge, I believe Amanda was, spoke to Melanie. I, I asked her to speak with Melanie and she wanted to have it on the agenda. And that was, I believe, on Friday?
That was Thursday.
That was Thursday.
Okay.
So it was supposed to be on the agenda. I was waiting to see our updated agenda today. I assume that it would be updated this week, but it, uh...
Okay, so do you have any materials to give us?
Uh, it had been emailed to Melanie. And...
Fortunately, I do have a copy of what you sent.
Okay.
When I saw that it wasn't on the agenda, I didn't know whether to short on time. I only have one copy though. But I'm gonna make a two copies for...
Yeah, let's, let's take a short break. So we all have... In addition to our intended new policy proposal for temporary moratorium of solar development.
For discussion.
For discussion, uh, brought forward by Amanda O'Brien. Where the director of that company. So come, come on forward, Amanda.
It may not be on.
It's okay, you can speak without, after you.
We don't.
So, um, as you guys know, because you've been dealing with the solar companies coming and making proposals for you for several years, that Kate Brown in 2016 mandated that coal-generated energy is completely phased out by 2030 and that utility companies are required to purchase half of their energy from renewable resources. So these energy companies started looking into auctions and one of the auctions was solar and found that Lake County was an optimal place for that, given the fact that we've got lower tax rates, lots of sunshine. And the biggest thing is, we don't have any guidelines or regulations because this is new technology. So rules haven't been written for it yet. And we're seeing more and more solar developed. And it's become obvious to many in the public that they're taking advantage of the county. The county is receiving funds for it, but at what cost? And so I'm going to propose that there is a temporary moratorium placed on all solar development until guidelines and regulations can be established. Because we have regulations for if you wanna put a fence up, if you wanna tear down your house, if you wanna build a well. But there is no regulations in this county for solar. And given the fact that so many of these proposed sites are on agricultural land, I think it's time we need to do that. We're behind the eight ball a little bit. So that is my, you know, in a nutshell, proposal. There's obviously, you know, details that need to go into it. Committees need to be formed, you know, guidelines need to be established, what did to the legalities of it. I, I would propose that this does not include existing, already approved projects, but for projects that have not been approved yet. Uh, I think that it's...
Not been approved by the planning commission or not been approved by, on what level?
I think not approved by the planning commission, the county, whatever, or in the state, or in the, um, case of Blue Marmot. They're going around the county by going through the state. And they group several small projects into one large project so they can bypass. However, when speaking to state officials, they said that if it gets applied for, um, at the state level, they would have to follow county regulations. Well, that's only if county regulations are in place. If we put this moratorium in place now, before Blue Marmot goes and actually puts in their application, all they put in so far is a notice of intent. If we can put this in place before they do that, that buys six months of time for, for the county to develop the necessary regulations. And then Blue Marmot, even though they're going through the state and puts the county in an advisory role only, Blue Marmot would still have to follow those regulations.
When you, so you have the ORS stating?
I have that coming from an official from the organ Department of Energy.
So...
One of the departments.
When all of this stuff, it's highly emotional for everyone, you know? I was born and raised right next to where they were. We have to have, we can't go by what somebody said.
Right.
We have, if somebody says that, we have to have the ORS. We have to have the law.
There is an ORS in place at the state.
So what I'm saying is, if we're gonna do anything, if you say, I don't want it because this guy said, or this woman said, I want the legal description or the case number or the ORS proving that that was done. It's just because when we go in somewhere and say we decide to, um... It's just because when we go in somewhere and say we decide to, um, do this moratorium, if we don't have our legal ducks in a row, there's going to be a lot of egg on our face, for one thing. And they have the ability to twist things to their benefit. That's all I'm saying. And so no matter what we bring up, whatever the subject, we have to have, it can't be emotional. And I'm an emotional person. Commissioner Winters is the one that has helped me trying to, about the process stuff. But if we're gonna do this right, we have to have all the legal descriptions, case numbers, ORSs, whatever the subject. And I, so I'm just throwing that out.
And I get that and I, and I'd like to kind of play devil's advocate and say, there are yard twists seeing everything around. We have ORSs stating that you cannot put solar arrays on high value ad land. And that includes any irrigated land or anything that has been irrigated or been in the irrigation district in the last 20 years. Yet we see more and more solar development going on irrigated.
So where, where is that at?
So one prime example would be, as you head to Clamath Falls, this is in Clamath County, but, um, is it right outside there? I'm really bad with geography, sorry. You know, you look on the right and there's acres and acres of.
Yeah, but where, where, where does it say it in the law? Cause I have never thought that.
I will, I have that at the house. I have it on my computer and I think there is an actual ORS number.
And that's, that's all I mean. So, so let's, as the independent board of commissioners, we represent all sites. And we have to try to balance all of that. So, um, on solar, it's very, very emotional, as Mark said, it's, I don't know if it's going to be in your backyard. Understand that a hundred percent. One thing I've always agreed to is there's a process, whether you're pro-solar or you're against solar. We have to keep a process in place for everybody. I think there's probably many of us sitting here as went through the conditional use process. But our places on farm ground that is smaller than what the law says you can put a house on. So when we start piecing things out and saying, solar doesn't fit for conditional use, but this non-farm welling over here is okay, then we start getting into lawsuits and those type things. So I'm very much on a process for all sites and for there to be a process for that. All sites complete their case and go forward. I myself take off my commissioner's hat. I'm a private, private property rights person. I pay the taxes on it. I pay the mortgage on it. How's government tell me what to do with my property? I don't get that right as commissioner. I have to make sure there's a process. So I'm really interested today of what you guys have to say as far as a process. Because of, obviously this didn't get advertised right. There is a whole component of other people that are going to push for a process a different way. And our duty set here is to allow a process for the public. Not for ourselves or not for individuals, but a process that allows land use to be able to be implemented at several different levels. So if we take action on this, it may impact another part of the process. That's where I, I'd like to make sure that people who are with us, I, I'll, and try to be representative for.
And I understand that too. I'm not a proponent, never been a proponent of not in my backyard. Um, I've been a victim of eminent domain, as you guys also know. Um, I fought Bo Dot for two and a half years on a food bar or a creek project through our property in which we really had little say over something going on in my own property. So I am very much a proponent of property rights. But I also know if you want to put in a septic system, there are rules that say, well, you have to test it and it has to cook at a certain amount. So then you can only have so many people living in that house because that's what the soil is, it's a piece of work. It says you have to have it X number of feet from your prop, from your neighbors because you don't want to contaminate your neighbor's water supply. It says you have to have it X number of feet from any waterways because again, you don't want to contaminate. None of those sort of rules exist for solar development right now. So.
I, I think there's probably more rules for solar at the state level.
At the state level, but not at the county level.
I believe that the county level, under, when these go under conditional use, which is a change of the use of the land, that is whenever there can be conditions put upon and those type of things. So there is some triggers. I agree with you that maybe I'd have to research more in the Arlins and here as far as the county rules. But if you're going for conditional use, you can put conditions upon that land for no matter what kind of development it is. And that's, that's one of the things that I've always made sure that people go with me and try to go with me at that time. So there is some rules out there. Do there be some better ones?
And this would give you the opportunity to move into what was your current habit and what you would make it better. And so that's all I'm asking is for, you know, you have Blue Marmot capital who has five projects, none of which are contingent with each other. There's no touching borders. And yet they have linked it into one project because they knew that most likely four of those five project sites would not be approved. So they have bypassed the county because if you guys don't, they know that it wouldn't be approved. But they also know you don't have the rules in place that would stop it. Whereas, and the state will allow it because as much as we have rules, we also have politics. And they're pushing, the state at the state level, they are pushing for renewable energy projects. So this kind of helps give you guys a little bit more tea. Instead of simply an advisory role, yes, you'll be in advisory role, but you can say, hey, you know, we think that it's good for this project site, but not for these ones. And here are the reasons why. Here are our guidelines. And so, and this isn't just for Blue Marmot, this is for future projects as well because Blue Marmot's not going to be the last one. Obsidian's not going to be the last one. The one at the airport that you guys, you know, have already developed, that's not the last one. There will always be another one because we have such ideal conditions in some ways for solar. But just because we have all the sunlight, does that mean that the ground is okay for it? Does that mean that the economic impact of the neighbors is makes it okay? And, and I do believe you should be able to do what you want on your own property. But if it is at the detriment of, to the environment, if it violates any state or county rules, or if it is economically negative to your neighbors, there needs to be some consideration for that. And we're seeing that there is some very definite negative repercussions for the neighbors of the solar.
We came back here really wanting to speak. Say your name for representative.
I'm Jonathan Venrugal. I'm with LCRI, rare Maricor member. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, just a quick question for Amanda. Clarification on the verbiage. Are we talking about this being a moratorium on all solar development or large scale, um, commercial development solely?
It would be on all solar development because you can't, you know, segregate between one or the other until regulations and guidelines can be established. And it would be six months.
Personally usage, like farm on a barn or a.
I would think some, you know, this is, this is more like for the solar farm type thing.
So large scale.
So we're, so we're talking primarily large?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not talking like residential because there's already stuff in place for that.
Right, yeah. Thank you for the clarification.
Sorry.
Questions, comment? Uh, going back, one of the things you said earlier, um, about it only being for those that have not yet been approved. Uh, you actually write in, I think it's in section two, while this would not apply to any that are already in development or those whose plans have been approved. It would apply to all those other, all, regardless of whether applications is done at the state or county level during this moratorium. I think that's where my board is kind of coming from in trying to, to navigate whether or not this would put us in violation of the process that's already put into place by the state when people have applied. They've put their application through and they're locked into that process and whether or not this would actually have any teeth to hold them, hold things up. And whether or not it would actually violate that person's ability to go through the process appropriately by law that's already in place. So that's, I guess, I don't know, that's just a thought.
Yeah, and, and this is all stimulated by this one project, but we're, we're really going outside of where we probably should be when we're.
I'm asking a question about this.
In conclusion, well, I'll get to it. My comments are. Um, our land use ordinance, or all our land use stuff, you have to take into consideration, if you're going to set a policy. And if your land use ordinance is going to be changed by policy, you've got the hearing process, you've got all kinds of different processes and everything. It's not as simple as say, okay, commissioner, so this policy is in place. And we're talking state law, we're talking our own local law, which is our ordinance. Whenever we open up an ordinance hearing and everything, that is whenever everybody gets a chance to, to talk about.
But we're not, we're not there at all yet.
But that, that's what I'm saying is if, this triggers much more than just us trying to get six months to stop Blue Marmot or any other developer.
Well, and I, I don't even know if that's necessarily.
Well, that's what I heard. Was to get six months to build, to set policies in place that would put the guidelines around Blue Marmot of what they have.
It wouldn't just be Blue Marmot, it would be all large scale solar development.
See, that's where I suppose the concern of, a large concern is is that it's, that this, this is, we're, we're trying to change what you're asking us today. And I mean, you have every right, I mean, where the public, everyone does, to come and bring this stuff before us. And that's why when we spoke earlier, I said, make sure you speak to Melanie, get on the agenda and everything. And it's unfortunate that it, that you get on the agenda in time. But, um, I think you, you provided, um, supporting documents for the public comment that you want to give to us. And, and we're, we're wanting to hear it. We want to listen to what, what people have to say. I'm, does, does it actually trigger anything? I'm not sure it actually triggers anything.
Well, I.
I think that at this point.
Maybe I'm talking out of turn, but I would think if we implement something that goes against what ordinance, that changes what ordinance are different than what ordinance is.
Agreed.
We'd, we'd have to double check all that over and all that. And then, um, you've made a very good point is, is, uh, EFSEC is way around the counties. And that is in law and that is in the state. And we cannot, we can make things, um, at our power's level, local laws, but they went around us.
Right.
So I don't know. There's a lot of questions to ask, but maybe I spoke out of turn, but I would say a policy that shuts down, but they can develop solar in Lake County for six months, but go against Miami's law under conditional use. That's my guess.
Um, Shannon had a question.
So.
Yeah, I was going to, I'd like to open it up to everybody else.
The, the way I look at this, we're, we're, Shane, I'm Shane and Peel. Um, we're a nation of laws. We have federal laws, we have state laws, we have local laws. By letting them deal with this at the state level, it's putting it in their hands where you as the county commissioners, you'd be looking out for your constituents. And so I feel like you need to put something in place that's going to protect the people who voted for you in office. And the state needs to follow whatever guidance you guys give. We're asking for a moratorium, we're not asking for solar to be stopped in the county. We just want some guidance put out there so that it makes sense to put it where people want to put it. Putting it on irrigated farmland makes no sense. There's case law already that has happened in the Medford area that it's been fought. It's a, it's a state ordinance, but honestly, I think the county needs to put some teeth into what they, you know, to back their constituents.
So on that case law, did they stop the solar development?
Yes, they did.
So that's your perfect way to fight this at the state level?
I think you need to worry about doing your job, Brad. I really do. You're, you're, we're voted into a position to protect your constituents. And this is the way you're supposed to do it. This is how it works.
So I, I don't believe that we can mandate passing that land use auction.
Eugene did it as well. Eugene did a, did a six month moratorium where they established guidelines and regulations because so many solar companies were starting to develop on the, um, the farms that are growing grass seed and everything. So they said, hey, you, your guys' technology has outpaced the law. So we are putting a six month moratorium so we can sit down and look at how this needs to be done and establish guidelines and policy. So that Eugene did it and then there was a second county that did it as well.
That question.
This is a comment for commissioners. Jim Walz, uh, Lake County, LCRI Chair now. And a great promoter. We promoted a lot of the solar. And when I came to the commissioners and we've turned down solar on ag irrigated ground, as an ex natural resource conservation employee, I was wrong and that's the right thing to do. But we should have had a committee set down with extension, natural resource conservation service, ranchers, and do it by soil class and do a more thorough process of doing this. I agree with a more thorough process. Moratoriums are not, I don't know what's the legal thing for you guys, but this is the process. We need more process than this, than what we've done because there's non-irrigated ag ground that is important grazing ground, important land. And soil class is one way to do that. We've always said Alpham and Sagebrush is the best place for solar. Stuck to that to our guns and we would testify against any other one that came in that wasn't doing that, as we always have. But we need to, I think the planning process through the planning commission and setting up that committee to get those things in locally would be a great advantage. So I'm not the technical person on government, county government, but on soils, I think that's the right thing to do.
So just for the conversation's sake, where would you want the soil class limit? Well, what soil class would you say?
I haven't thought that, that far, Mark. I really haven't. Um, you know, I know a lot of things we do, class six and stuff, but I'm not, I, I, that's why I think it needs to be a full committee of extension, NRCS, the planning commission, ranchers, you know, ag people, and we think this through. We, I haven't thought that far. That's the problem. Well, I think that's the.
Well, just for discussion too, and with, we have to take water into consideration in today's world. And that's one reason in Clamath County, some of those places are doing solar because they're losing their water. Within the valley here, you can't even drill an irrigation well within a mile of any grid to carry a creek now. So you, I'll raise my hand. I, I'm, I'm on just, uh, because I can't get no water, I'm dry land. But if there's soil classifications up there, but my production's down here.
Well, dry land can be good, good grazing land too, you know, Brad. That, I'm saying that's what we need to think through all that, uh, Sagebrush, Alpham land, and also got wildlife degree. But we're seventy eight percent government land in this, so I'm not too worried about wildlife. Losing a little sage goss ground here and there.
Well, I know.
So you know what I mean? I want to think about all this. I think we need to think about it. That's all I'm saying. I think we need a process. I don't know if that's a moratorium or what that is.
And I'm, I'm agreeing with you. I like where that you're going, Mr. Walz. It is, the, probably the start is the finding commission is, is the appropriate place because that's our tool for land. This is the finding commission. We as commissioners think it's built to us, but they're the ones that are the decision makers on land use. So I hear what you're saying. I'm sorry, did you say?
No. Um, I have two points. One, off of what Mr. Walz had said, when you guys originally did the one at the airport, it was a crappy neighborhood. The process in building it stopped. I complained to Mr. Williams about all my cows having conjunctivitis and pink eye all summer because they wouldn't water. I actually went and drug the guy down to my corrals, where he could see all the infected abscess eyes that we were patching on every stick of livestock that I owned. Horse, cow, goat, even my chickens had conjunctivitis from the alphalai that was raised off of that damn project. They watered more, but it was still really limited. But no commissioner, as far as a neighbor, came and said, hey, how's it going? What's this doing to you? I had pictures of the dust cloud, it was like a plume over the property all summer long. I'm not looking forward to it again. That's that first point, when you talk about being passionate about something. Second point, I have an absentee owner, he owns a hundred and eighty acres. If he thinks that the neighbor next door is generating profit from something as stupid as this, and you're not going to prevent it, do you know what he's going to do? He's going to do the same damned thing. He has no loyalty to this community, he has nothing to give us apart from money. How many other absentee agriculture owners are in this community in the valley? You have neighbors right next to you, Brad, if your watering table's falling and you can't dig a well, how about the livestock producer next door? What if there's more money in the solar crack? What are you gonna, when, when is the precedent of allowing one on ag land? Goodness set the precedent for the whole damned community to do the same. That's my point. Thank you.
Other comments? Pete Talbot, uh, the discussion seems to be, can we do a moratorium or not? Let's find out. How long's that going to take to get ahold of your legal counsel and just ask? And then go from there. Whether you go to the planning commission or you guys do it, let's find out what we can and can't do immediately. Because apparently they're going to make application next week. And if that happens, that sounds to me like it's in the process.
On the Blue Marm.
Yeah.
Jonathan Van Ruggel, just one other comment to back that up. I'm not from around here, but I'd like to say that you are all in a very unique position. And I think that Lake County would benefit, um, from more public input and from a position, um, such as Amanda is proposing for a more, um, active policy and engagement on this decision, so.
Other comments?
Well, I might as well say my part. Um, I'm Jack Vernon, uh, I am the VCE of two of the properties that are being considered by the environment. Um, nothing has been conveyed to me, uh, this summer as far as what they're doing. I had people all over the, both places that I had, one out by the dump and one by south Lakeview. And I don't agree with them, and they're taking irrigated ground that is, uh, uh, going to be taken out of production, out of my operation, cattle operation. I'm also here wearing the third hat, and that's as chairman of the Board of Lakeview Water Users. And so they're taking out of irrigated ground by one of our stockholders is also a concern. Uh, they're talking about mitigating and moving bar to other areas, but nothing has come before the board, so we really can't address that. But the board has been on record in the past, in nineteen or twenty eighteen, as being opposed to any, to any removal of ag ground, irrigated or productive ag ground for grazing purposes. So I reiterate that as the board's position that was established in twenty eighteen. We would agree, or I would agree with what Amanda's doing. And you need to, I think we need to get a county, uh, uh, recommendations so we're not in an advisory role to the state and the perk. This is not where we need to be, uh, we need to set something and, and then the law or the, the, uh, projects and development can then go by our standards and not by federal standards. So that's my comment.
Yeah, the, I hear what you're saying, Jack. I don't know the legislation, if it went through or, maybe Jim can speak to it, but I believe that, um, they're trying to get solar projects up to thirteen hundred acres, nineteen hundred acres through the local process. I don't know if that legislation, I thought it's January, it passed. So, um, that may mean that much more importance to pull together, uh, a divided group to make some recommendations for, uh, whether we change our ordinance or whether it's, we can do it as a policy or whatever. Especially if it's going to, those sides of tracks are going to be decided at the local level. If you can do nineteen hundred acres all in one thing, decided locally. It depends on which side you're on, whether that's good or bad.
Karen Savatjeck, my question is, is you seem like you're totally against us wanting a moratorium, Brad. I, I'm just going to put that out there, because you've been rebutting almost everything that Amanda or anybody said.
I get what you're saying.
And then you, just a few moments ago, specifically said, I'm a private landowner and I don't want him next to me.
And I don't want it on my property. Personally, I want to raise my cows.
Correct.
And do drive.
So when or if are you going to make a decision whether you want to have a committee formed to try to come up with what you're wanting legally, ORS, the whole works? When would you as commissioners decide whether we can form a committee to try to get a moratorium or find out if it's legally possible to do this?
So your, your, this earth's so hard, this is correct. I have about two hundred and forty acres, I'm using that as a farm and cattle commission, I don't want to, I just be a person.
Okay.
So I never did nothing about it either, I don't think they're going to be on their producers' altar.
But you didn't want it on your.
But I also, on my house place, on my house place, there's fourteen acres, I got under conditional use forty years ago. So I've used the process two different times. As far as your question about putting together a committee, you just heard me say, that's a good idea, we ought to work through our planning commission. I, I'm not opposed to that, I'm not opposed to that at all. There's a lot of things go through your mind when you're sitting here. And there's things in process right now. We have a hearing tomorrow on solar projects. Uh, there's, there've been a lot of projects that's went on. The county itself is, you hear, we done three hundred and twenty acres ourselves. We would see sixty-four thousand dollars a year for our airport. So sitting here, there's a lot of things that are working. I know you hear it sound like I'm being negative or against it. I want to try to make sure a process is in place for everybody involved. That's my job, is make sure the process is there. Whether I support solar, I don't support solar, I can't really have that. We have to find the process and support everybody. And I'm not opposed to put the committee together to look at this, to shore up some of the things, especially on productive farming.
And then that's what we're asking for, we're asking for a moratorium so that this can all be flushed out and figured out to see if the county does have a process or can create a process that will, that the state will have to follow. And so that's what we're asking.
But I am the devil's advocate, can everybody here agree on post-productive farm ground?
On what? I'm sorry.
Post-productive farm ground.
No.
We think that I, we're a figure, a guy that, that puts his cows up on this rocky hillside to cap them out and take them as productive farm ground. And then you have other, so these are the things that have to be flushed out whenever that committee comes together, because one person viewed a post-productive farm ground, another person, then one producer viewed it, it's not the same. Mr. Schulmberger?
Phil Schulmberger, so I think that's, that's it, Brad, is, uh, this solar, good, bad, that's, everybody can have their own opinion on it. But, so it's in our county, whether you're in Northlake or Southlake. I think that's what people are asking. They want the opportunity to have input on how that solar is going to look in our county. Because as, right now, we don't really have that. So leaving out, or you're for it, against it, it's a good ground, bad ground, that's for another day. That's, that's the whole purpose of the moratorium, is to discuss those things. But as of right now, there's not a lot us as Lake County people have, can say about who, where, how. And I think that's all that is being asked, is we have a choice to shape, or at least have our opinions heard as to rules.
Blue Marm purposely run around the county process because they felt that people weren't favorable at the state level. That's in some of the case law stuff that I saw between them and Eugene. They, they purposely run around the, the county because they didn't feel like it was going to be favorable for them. I think that needs to change.
I'd like to add too, that you said, you know, these rules need to be fair. They need to be fair to the landowners, to the public, to the solar companies. Right now, it's not fair, because we have had no say in it, we have had no input in it. The favor is ninety percent in the solar company court. So we're not saying stop solar, because I think we can all agree in this room that there are places in this county that are perfectly suitable for solar. We're just saying, let's make it fair. Let's even it out so it's not ninety percent in this court, and just kind of spread that fairness around so that we all have a say in it, so that it's not just going to benefit one large industry and a couple small landowners. Because like, um, she said there, several of these places are absentee owners. Jack can answer better than me, but the place by the dumps, they don't live in Lake County anymore, do they? They have, they've got no vested interest in that property. Gary Denise, he has no family left. He has no vested interest in that property after he leaves. Rob Reisch, he comes down and visits once in a while, but he's got no heirs, he's got no family. He doesn't live here, he has no vested interest in this property. So we're benefiting the solar companies and absentee owners, but we're not actually benefiting the people in this community other than through tax dollars, and we're just asking to, you know, have a say in it and make it a little bit more fair. So it's not just one-sided.
It might not be so contentious if there's a process. I mean, I didn't have an objection to the airport personally. Yeah, it was a pain in my neck, but I knew it was coming to an end. There was, there was like the end of the tunnel, it was gonna, the dust would settle and life would go on, I was good with that. But if it just keeps, it's, it's like a cancer, it sort of feels like it's just growing and growing. And if there was actually a process, like Phil said, where we could discuss what is viable, what isn't, where they, what the county should look like, then it wouldn't be so contentious. At least we could go, there's got to be a place for solar, there has to be a place for this here. Okay, so let's all be part of the process of setting the ground rules as to where and why, and we can live with it rather than just be in absolute opposition to it.
So I agree with you guys. I mean, we have so little good farm ground, especially irrigated farm ground. It's an insanity to me to put it on solar. And, um, Mr. Talbot and I talked about the solar soil classes, that sort of thing. You know, all of the energy is shipped out of state, definitely out of our community. We don't, as a community, get any benefit that way. We do take in, the county does, take in a lot of money off solar. I am with you guys a hundred percent. I want a new committee, I want to, I want to put it together, I think we need to have a county policy. I just want to make dang sure that there's not one of us in here that wants to lose private property rights in the, in the process. So if we make a policy for solar on irrigated farm ground, and I want to build a house on that place, I don't want to take that chance of me being able to build in a house or not farm dwelling or agritourism, I don't want it to affect that. And so what I, what I will do is I will contact our county council. I'll present this to them and ask them these questions, and then get back to you guys, hopefully by tomorrow. And, I don't know. Because we gotta do, we, not only we, we have to do everything legally, we gotta do it smart so we're not cutting our own throats no longer. And, um, because I'm with you. I'm not against solar at all. It brings in almost a million dollars per county, for this county. And with all the state, federal setbacks, this county needs every penny. Otherwise, we're going to grab more away. And I think we can do it wisely. We have millions of acres of hard pan and alphalai and those are my thoughts. And so I can contact, uh, and we can get a committee together. I think we need to act quickly on what we can do legally and wisely.
Yeah, so if you want to establish a law upon relevant, there's a set of rules you have to follow, right? You have to apply for conditional use, rezoning of the ground. So it just seems like that, you know, the county should.
Solar, Phil, solar going through, uh, conditional use process also at least.
But those rules aren't.
We can refine the rules, is what I'm getting at today. The rules that apply to a conditional use permit based on solar. Among those rules that are basically flashes onto soil classifications, our productive farm ground.
Is it irrigated or? Yeah, I mean, and so that, so that's just my point is, is, you know, there's a whole host of rules to follow for this out here, there probably should be for solar as well.
Yeah, we can shore that up, and we can also put in verbiage that states, you know, if it's a high piece of soil type, but it doesn't use for anything, and you don't have community backlash, we should have the opportunity to say, under the commission's discretion and the, the, um, committee's discretion, we can allow certain things.
I can tell you, I, I think it's a great idea, but it doesn't just, it's, it doesn't just stop there. Anything that the planning commission decides can be appealed to us as the board of commissioners and appealed on up to Luba. So if we put things in place, and they do get appealed on up to Luba. When they get appealed to Luba, pro or con, by our rules, we push those rules forward, hopefully they can difference at that level. But there is no way that we stop it just at the county level. But if we put rules and things in place, have to go through the appeal process. The way it works, if the planning commission makes a decision, it can be appealed to us. We act quasi judicial, and then our decision, we can either uphold or overturn that decision, and then it can be appealed on up to Luba, just so you know what the process is. I think we're on the right track as far as trying to. I think we're on the right track as far as trying to get a committee together to present not only our finding commission, but other people on that committee to build, put those rules forward to the board, to adopt. Uh, the process of, of that, I don't know if it's just through, uh, uh, policy. I don't know how much weight that would hold, or is it best to do, change our ordinance to take the adopt those rules? Darwin, you have been the finding director, do you have any?
Well, I've, I've got a lot of comments for all of them. But for what specifically you talked about, yeah, to have it concrete, I think it'd be a amendment, a legal amendment in our ordinance.
So at least it'd be in the ordinance amendment. So to amend the ordinance, does that take a full hearing process?
Yeah, the, the finding commission ultimately would hold, um, you know, hearing or more and then they would get a recommendation to you guys and then the board would then, you know, ultimately adopt that ordinance and change and then it would be reviewed by the state as well to see if that's in compliance with state law.
So I know this is what people wanted to hear, but how long would that process take?
Easily a six-month process, usually.
And that's to change ordinance?
And if we're gonna change ordinance and we're talking about, you know, having to notify, you know, property owners that have these types of lands that may be affected and, um, you know, that they have, you know, rights to own that as well. Yeah, this is a, you know, the moratorium question is a very good question, it needs to be answered. As Commissioner Albertson said, check completely the council's seat and approve the moratorium. Um, one other county, like you said, that, uh, Lake County. One of the things, and again, I don't mean to take over your media, but just as finding director, I just wanna state is that we have a conditional use process which allows in agricultural A1 and A2 zones to put in, you know, a public facility, you know, for commercial sale of, of solar, a utility scale project. And that has a process that has underlying, you know, general conditions and criteria in our Article twenty-four conditional use section, which are applied every time. Then there's a state law that gets applied directly. And so, when we, when we think, well, we haven't adopted any local law. There's been a local law in place for, you know, since before the eighties even on solar. We, we also have, um, renewable energy plan that, that is rarely used and even looked at. Um, it's a, you know, probably a forty-year-old document. But the process every time has to follow the state law as well. And if it's not in our ordinance, it gets applied directly. And so, the appeal that's being heard tomorrow evening is, you know, part of that appeal process and part of the things that they will discuss tomorrow are about state law criteria, not local county law criteria. That, that needs to be addressed fully and, uh, supported findings and documentation. So, you know, state law has limits on what can go on irrigated agricultural land. Um, and certainly at a local level, I, I agree with you, there, there'd be high hurdles for them to blue marmot or any other project to, to have to, uh, you know, get over to put a solar project in irrigated lands. Uh, a goal three exception would be required if it, if it breaks a threshold, but that threshold is very low. It's not nineteen hundred acres, it's not, two hundred, twenty acres, it's, it's much lower. Um, twelve and twenty is, is often talked about as, as those limits in the inclusion. So, I, I, I understand, you know, the frustration and, and, um, you know, this, this is a, a, a very hot topic. It has been around the state for many years and, and, um, we can say that we've, you know, the finding department may have failed in adopting or, or even instituting this, let's move forward, be proactive on how we want to regulate solar. Uh, but when it came down to it, the state has, has plans in place and then they have those hurdles that have to be met, like criteria that has to be met. And, you know, to date, we haven't seen any in high-value farm land. Blue Marmot is going through a state process. I think, there's an argument to be made, I think, by them, that would say, we're already in the process. We've been in it for over two and a half years now. Although they put the brakes on it because they're going through all their legal stuff, PD mean, um, they're in the process, they've, they've out, you know, they've spent a whole lot of time and money on it. This moratorium may not affect that, even if it was passed tomorrow, I don't, I, I don't see how that, we're gonna have a latent stand on on that. But the state gets every criteria from us and as a cooperating agency with them, we have, as a SAG, a special advisory group with them, we will, um, give them all the criteria that, that applies to Lake County and also recommendations and any public comment. You know, the, the board position that was mentioned wasn't a board position as I remember in two thousand eighteen. It was a, a comment on the record. Um, but this, this board hasn't officially said that, and I don't need to speak for them, but, um, there is a process, we, we go through it every time. You have a voice, it's not being shut, but it is a process and it is very frustrating. I, I admit that for both sides. I mean, it, it is, you know, we, we're going on two and a half, almost three years just for the obsidian solar project. Um, and, and that's too long. Obviously, we could decide, and then we could put that to rest if, if it was a local decision on some of these areas that we don't wanna see it, or, or that the community itself doesn't wanna see it.
Couple points to this, one of what you guys have said. One, Mark, you were concerned like, hey, if we put this in for solar and then I wanna build my house, is this going to affect us? I mean, that's a very legitimate concern. The, um, the statute said, I'm gonna email you guys, I can email you all of them tonight after I get home from work and get kids in bed, we all know how fun that is. But, um-
Before you have two glasses of wine.
Well, I can't promise that one. But in that part where it talks about the solar development on ag land and actually the prohibitiveness of it, it actually, it's a subsection and it is specific to it on, cause it's, um, it's an ORS on development of renewable surfaces and conditional use permits on irrigated ag land. And then this is a subset specific to solar, to nothing else but solar arrays. So, that, um, hopefully, you know, if the state can do that, I don't know why we couldn't either. But I don't know, cause I'm not an attorney and that's way above my pay grade. Um, you know, and like Darwin, you said, we do have stuff that's been in effect since the eighties and we've got forty-year-old documents for it. It's forty years old. Technology is exponential. What, you know, it's kind of like, without opening a whole new can of worms, GMO. They said, you cannot, if you splice in DNA from one thing into a plant cell, then that's genetically modified and it has to be regulated by the test. But if we develop a molecular cannon and we shoot those genes in, which is now being done, that's not technically GMO according to the law and doesn't have to go through the federal testing for that to do. This is the same kind of concept. Yeah, we have laws in effect, but they're forty years old. And now there's brand-new technology. That technology has surpassed the law, we need to update that law. And so, we can all agree, there needs to be a committee, there needs to be policies put into effect. But what we're asking, and, you know, you guys need to look into the legality, can we put in a moratorium while we put together that committee and the policies? Um, Blue Marmot has submitted a notice of intent. They have not submitted an application to the state. It is a notice of intent that we are going to apply. So that application has not yet been submitted. They have until January nineteenth to do so. We believe that they're gonna be doing it next week just from chatter we're hearing. So, that's why we're asking for that moratorium to be put in place. Just to give us that time to, or the committee to look at policy and to update the current policy.
What's current county policy on a neighbor impacting the other neighbor's value in their property?
We, we do not have a policy that I know of there. I, to my knowledge, and I don't wanna speak for him, Garrett is not here, the neighbor. One of the things out there, him and I had that conversation. Garrett, to my knowledge, Pete, there has not been anybody able to prove that their property is of less value. For most of us believe that if you have solar right up your back door, your property's gonna be worth a lot better. I, I agree with that. I don't know that anybody has, has followed that through enough to get that documentation done. And I think that's a key point for people that have solar right up to their doorstep by their neighbor. Um, there is rules that you have to stay so many feet away from the property line. I don't know what that distance is. Um, but I believe if it's, me personally, probably, I don't know if I'm supposed to say this in public meetings, but I'm going to. On Garrett's case, I would say he would have the best example of potentially devaluing his property. Very much so there. And my thought would be is you, you get an appraiser, not an accessory, but an appraiser to give you a value before and after, base, get a base on that. We don't have a policy on that, but it's hard to prove that your property values went down. And, uh, so I did have that conversation with Garrett. I think that could be one of the first ones in Lake County approved, if that happens. That doesn't mean I'm for or against the, the, I have all the process, a lot of process, but, um, unless you guys or anybody else, I mean, there's no policy about devaluing your neighbor's property. There's nuisance ordinance and things like that that doesn't apply to solar, but it's on nuisance.
What about an environmental, environmental study?
Environmental studies are done.
What about, what about other economic loss such as the example of the cows gaining conjunctivitis? So now you have, because of this property right next door to yours, now I have medical expenses, I have cows off of feed, that's gonna take them that much longer to gain the weight they need, so I have to feed them that much longer. So, so I've got all those extra expenses now. What about that economic loss or that for the loss of value of my animals? Or, you know, to that kind of stuff, there's a-
So do you think you could prove that in court?
I think with, like you said, the dust clouds and you get, you know, statements from your vet and everything else, it would be a-
The redwoods around here, look at the windfall, I mean, that would be a hard sell, I, I think.
It would be a hard sell.
Even if, I, I don't want them to regulate my dry land farming, I put up quite a deal to do that. Probably dry land farming. So, I, I, my cows have not been sick from my farming yet, but-
And I get that, um, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, there is, you know, you have a loss there.
Markets, you have to prove those things. And when you prove that, it may impact farm operations and other things that-
But, you know, and you do, you do have the loss of property value. This, this project goes in on Rob Rees' property, yeah, it might be far enough feet-wise from my house, but that sun shines every day and as those panels rotate, it's gonna be shining right into my house every single day.
Do they know the long-term health effects of these things for humans? I mean, can we be honest? Do they know the long-term effects of the battery storage, the, the things themselves, what they're doing to the, if they're in the ground, I mean, far enough to affect the water table, what they're actually doing to you with beans and your vicinity? I mean, you talk about not having an, an impact statement for what it's gonna do to the tax value of your neighbor's property. What the hell's it gonna do to your kids that live there for twenty years or the, the people that live next door to it for forty years? Do they know these things?
I don't know.
So you guys are willing to gamble this stuff?
I'm not aware of any long-term health impacts from, from solar. I mean, okay, yeah, they are in the ground to an extent, but it's the steel beams that are in the ground. We regulate people putting steel beams in the ground. What are we going to regulate, I suppose, you know, as far as, you know, how, how, we're, we're in a tough spot. Because we're in this position-
Truly, you guys led the way, so could we be honest here? If you didn't do it for the county-
Well, I don't know if we led the way, I don't know if-
Or that, that's correct.
In the, in the, in the valley floor, you guys led the way, the county did.
A process led the way.
But my, my thing is this, is that this could devalue our county. The, you drive into town, you've been to those places where industry is what you see. Do you wanna move there? When we're a ranching, logging, rural community and the beautiful views, the vistas, the sunrise, the sunset, the mountains are what you see. I mean, I look out my door, half of my house every day, you know what I see? I see a beautiful meadow right now. Move Gary Denise's cows out of it, which are there today, and put solar and it's gone. That landscape is gone. How many people drive that route every day to work? That is value to our, our county and our community, correct? And like I said, you let one person do it, then another guy's gonna do it, then another guy's gonna do it. And are we gonna be a county of solar and wind? Is that what we're gonna be renowned for? What do you want? What, what is the goal for our community?
What are we gonna be renowned for?
So, the one north of town is along a federally designated scenic highway. And it's designated because of the vistas that you see from it. And it's gonna impact that. You know, when we're doing, I work for the BLM, so we do a lot of NEPA stuff. And they talk about cumulative effects. You know, what are the cumulative effects on the county if we keep adding these willy-nilly? And it's not in our control because it's going around us to the state level.
So I'm glad you opened up that because I'm gonna be a little emotional. The BLM has one point seven million acres wild and scenic wilderness characteristic. I set through it and our info was appreciated that much and used that much. I, I even wanna compare BLM to the county process.
I'm just saying, part of the NEPA process is cumulative effects, it's a federally mandated process. And, you know, at some point, we're gonna hit a tipping point with solar. I don't know if we're there yet or not, but we're getting close.
Yes, sir.
Just like to make a comment here. So, you all might be quite aware that you're awful close to offsetting all of your carbon emissions here in two thousand twenty and will be the first county in the state of Oregon to do so. Pretty unique position, I would say, to be in. Um, however, I'd like to, to end with a question and to bring this back to the, the discussion about a committee and a moratorium. Based on that comment, what downsides do we see to, to imposing a, a committee and a moratorium um, for further discussion on these topics? Since Lake County is in this position where, you know, you, you're almost there with the carbon offset um, and other issues related to that. You can go back and look, all the work Jim Wallis and I'll share have done. I'm just curious if there's any negatives you see as board of commissioners to implementing that moratorium or a, a committee of some sort.
So for me, that's a two-part question. First part, committee, a hundred percent. Our previous direction and everything through our finding commission and through the process, we're, where we're at. So if we put a moratorium on today, we have to check the legalities of it. Off the top of my head, Blue Marmot's one that's in the process. There's other ones that are in the process, Red Rock is in the process. So if we put a moratorium on today, what does that mean to the ones that's in process? Are as moratorium could only be for any new applicants compared on? And are we gonna get a lawsuit of our past history of allowing solar feeding through the process? So we have a legality question on the moratorium. I'm interested in other, other counties or cities or where have done that. What is our exposure representing taxpayers for lawsuits? Cause I can guarantee you, as you guys all know, a lot of these solar companies are very much embedded with dollars and legal people. And so, we have to look at that, our legal counsel has to advise us on that. Putting a committee together, absolutely a hundred percent, we gotta do that. We probably should have done it before then. Raise my hand, we should have. Moratorium opens up a whole bunch- Moratorium opens up a whole bunch of legality. Plus, there are projects out there. I'll, I'll talk Red Rock specifically. Forty-four jobs at the site, 100 jobs associated with it. Our community needs those jobs.
But Red Rock is my other one. It's a moratorium.
And they're looking at doing solar. They're looking at doing a significant solar project. So the moratorium would shut that.
And the moratorium would apply to ones that have not yet applied. So.
I, I'm not sure where they're at on it. They've been to us and talked to us about it. I don't know if there's an application. And I don't know if the property they're trying to put on is. But I, I throw those out there because the question was posed. So the question's posed. I'm talking individually. We have four, three. The moratorium has a lot of, they have a lot of different hits on it and we have to check into it legally. Really, because I guarantee you, if you can be sued, the county will be sued for all its debts and having deep pockets. And so we have to, as Mark says, we have to make sure we do things appropriately and we have any response. And so you, you ask, throw it out there for, I'm an individual department.
You said you're just asking for it in for six months. And I think that's kind of, speaking of what some of my notes or finding out of this conversation is, we are in a tough place of being asked to regulate right now and provide rules and to try and slow things down a little bit. At the same time, we're usually put in the position of being kind of a pushback on a lot of state regulations or things that we sometimes feel are untussed or our community does. The, what I'm getting at is that I feel like the public is just feeling left out of the process to an extent. And it's like, whoa, pump the brakes. But there's a little bit too much development in this area going on. Like Jim Hall's pointed out, we're 78% public land in government ownership or stewardship. That's 22% left in private ownership and a very small chunk of that is irrigated farm land. Um, so there's, there is a natural, I think, completely justified, um, feeling that we want to safeguard, protect what we have. And to kind of maintain our culture that we have currently in place. So I think, like what Commissioner Winters was saying about having a committee put together, I, I think it is a two-part issue. I really appreciate the fact that we actually have something presented to us in the morning. And that it's something that we can look at and some, that gives us a better idea of exactly where the community's going and what their feelings are on the subject. And that pump the brakes overall feel is what I'm getting. We, we need to have time to think about this. We need to have time to sit back. And, and the, the issue really is that we just don't have enough tools at our disposal on a local government level to cope or deal with large-scale solar in a meaningful way to where the community feels involved. Yeah, maybe the committee is just the right thing when we need to start having those discussions. Cause I'm not sure where we go from here though. I don't want to limit if there's more public comment, if there's additional questions on this. I just wanted to know, is this, is the feeling, I'll ask the chair, uh, your meeting. Uh, but would we consider looking at a committee tomorrow? Or would we consider looking at that this week sometime if we wanted to pull a special session? Talk about who we would have on a committee of that sort? Just the committee, um, not necessarily the moratorium you said check. I'm just trying to pick one thing out.
Good.
Knock, knock the points off.
I believe on pulling the committee together, it's, it's important to do. I believe the planning commission is a key part of that committee. It puts quite, quite a bit on to the planning commission and the planning director, uh, we're talking land use. And, yeah. So that people understand, whenever we get hit with, if you guys filed this, very rarely does it get to the Board of Commissioners. Because the planning commission may make the decision under land use. It only gets to us when it's appealed to us. So the, the planning commission, which is a decision-making body, has to have the tools to be able to work within the guidelines for everybody. And so they're a key part of that committee too. And then we need, I think, from the producer's side. And you have to have somebody from the solar side. You have to be well-rounded or else it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't end up being successful. And all the years I've been doing this, guys, and there's quite a few producers in the room. I'm, I'm going to say this out loud, I guess maybe because I'm getting long too. But the motion that's been coming from the producers, neighboring landowners across the county, bringing things up in the hearing process of anything from cultural sites to pigmy rabbits to dust, to all kinds of things, is bringing more and more attention to the producers. And as everybody reaches to shut these down, that pot expense is going to be to the people, it's the producers. As more and more attention comes to whether it's dust or it's a cultural site or it's, it's, you're tearing up the land, beating the sagebrush off, the more is coming to us as producers. It's bringing people from out of town to us. So I, I guess my caution over the years of watching and sitting through different hearings is, I, I, I really think that producers need to get together, president of the water users and everything, and be a key part of this. Because there's a lot of things being said in hearing process that's going all the way to the state level that's bringing attention to us. And I sure don't want to be, throw on my personal, I don't want to have to. If I'm going to beat the sagebrush off my ground, I don't want to have to withdraw all the same processes. And there's starting to become a lot of attention based around this. Be careful with that place. So it is, it is, and I, I've sat through some hearings out there and bited my tongue. Because I'm acting quasi-judicial and there's things brought up that I would even land over to bring that up and bring that attention to the people. So I'm just probably outside of personal, talking that that's real. But as far as the committee, we need to be grounded. Need to bring everything in there so that we have heard some of those things I'm talking about right there. We have all voices heard. It's a tough situation.
And if the attorney says yes, a moratorium would be legal, would you guys be in favor of that to, as James said, kind of pump the brakes, slow down on this? So while the committee that sounds like most people are in favor of is put together and starts working on this.
So where, and, and where I am at on that is, is there is no clear definition of what that moratorium is for sure. Is, if somebody's, where does it cut off on the process? I, I know the driver on, I know, I know the driver on this is this one project. But we have some options out there and there's some other visions out there. Where do we, if we do a moratorium, that's what we as a board would have to look at, is this. How far along are people in process? Were they, 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 wouldn't we use Blue Marmot? That one's quite ways down the process, even though they just haven't noticed in the tent, they went quite a way. Do we have exposure by doing a moratorium and saving anything going any further? I would say we probably would leave it. I don't know.
Why I're worried for that is they've already put in two and a half years of what, at this point, that's another six months. You know? They've put in two and a half years. I know you can't.
So that'll be one of the questions I ask our attorney. And we could go from there. I mean, if, if you have specific questions, any of you that you will need to ask the attorney on this subject? I'll do it.
Well, Commissioner, sorry to interrupt you, but there's, has HUB City, are they passed or no, seven ten?
HUB City?
ESSF process.
Oh, yeah.
They're passed.
They're almost, no, the decision.
They've been approved. So those are the only two on the ESSF that we're dealing with.
Archway's got no seven ten.
Pardon me? Archway hasn't been noticed at the tent as well. Archway, so that's on the north end.
Well, I, you know, I'm not even aware of all the solar projects that's being proposed out there. So if we do a moratorium.
Well, and like you said, a lot of these don't even come for us. These are going either to the state process or at the planning commission level. We're typically not involved in these via the, or because of the potential of them being given to us.
I think for the sake of time, I'll ask Jim Bailey some of these questions. And I mean, you want Amanda to be your contact person?
Is there, is that a number that you guys would like to have as your contact person?
Yeah, I think so, because she's one that's taken the initiative and is sitting in the seat up there. So that sounds good to me.
Thanks, Jeff.
We have a question.
Well, I was just gonna ask once again, um, because we're trying to do work in the community, cost-saving work around renewable development. Um, for example, the animal hospital is, is invested in time, resources into a, a project proposal. But, um, so the size and scale of what's listed on that moratorium is pretty important to the work that LCRI is doing right now. And we just need to be clear on, you know, what we're, what the moratorium is trying to bar, I guess, in terms of size and scale.
So could I, can I ask a question, Amanda? Just, just one request, sorry.
Sure.
On that note then, would it be prudent to explain that and kind of pull that, pull that out a little bit in that case in terms of this is for large-scale solar processes? That maybe even are going through the state and not just the county level? And trying to have maybe something for us to point to when it goes through the state process? Because it's very clear that a lot of these projects are going through the state level to go around the county. But if we don't have anything at the county level that we can at least point the state to when we're reduced to an advisory role only? Say, look, you know, we've got some things here at the county level, whether or not they're guaranteed for anything. But at least it's something that we can point to and say, these need to be taken into consideration as well. Even if this is going through the state process, we have something to point to. So maybe even an acreage specification.
Yes, I think that'd be very prudent. And several counties that have put in guidelines and requirements or put in moratoriums, it has been, like you said, it's, it's large-scale agricultural operations, large-scale solar operations. And so they put, um, like this does not apply to lots that five acres or less. You know, that's just, some, some have done 20 acres, some have done five, some have done 10. It just depends on how.
I mean, we have to be careful. We just got to be careful. I mean, because if somebody wants to put a solar well in for their stock, does that, since they own 5,000 acres, does that apply to the acres when their lot is 360?
Well, and I have to clarify, I lied earlier. I do have solar on my property, I have solar wells, so I do have solar on my.
But I mean, we just got to make sure that.
I was trying to find an answer for LCRI.
Isn't there like a commercial grade usage level versus a personal?
Or utility?
Or utility grade level? Aren't, I mean, aren't they already established somewhere?
I, I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm not really presenting any answer. I was asking a question for hopefully LCRI's clarification on theirs because of the other issue of the, of projects that they're working on with a lot of these other folks on a smaller level. If, if there's going to be a proposal for this, whether or not it goes through.
And perhaps the wording is, it needs to be changed. I put in solar development. That, you know, their catchphrase changes almost as frequently as the wind. And sometimes it's solar development, sometimes it's solar farms, sometimes it's solar parks, sometimes it's solar arrays. But, you know, perhaps if we use wordings as more commercial than just development, which development encompasses so large.
So our, our taxation range is per megawatt, $7,000 per megawatt. So if we were looking at this, are we talking a certain number of kilowatts is produced is really per megawatt? As large scale or whatever. Uh, there's several things to look into from the taxation side of it triggers the $7,000 per megawatt. So maybe that's the, I would consider large scale. I don't know.
And I don't know how.
Go ahead.
Well, and, and then you have to think that whatever you put in place, there are certain components of people that will try to manipulate that. And if they're way around it, there's several small scale to get around. Or change the, divert each other in their array or development. They do that kind of crap all the time.
Yeah, so we have to bang it out. And that truly, there's a lot to look at on that.
Well, and this, this actually came out in a public meeting a couple of weeks ago. I, you guys weren't on the call, but it was with Association of Oregon Counties and solar developers. And they brought it to a bunch of the commissioners and it was, it was parliament and everything else where they discussed the potential. They wanted to ask if counties would consider or be okay with the reduction of the 7,000 per megawatt to 3,500 per megawatt? And then scaled down from there, 5%. I don't want that. Well, I didn't, I didn't want.
I said, hell.
Repeat that. So, but, and then also they talked about consideration of changing the, the way it's captured in terms of per megawatt, changing it to per acre. And that was actually a suggestion that came out. And that should be by the public because it, it does change the look on things. And if they're bringing that to us in a public meeting or on Zoom call with a bunch of commissioners with Association of Oregon Counties, I would assume there will be legislation in the future on this matter to reduce that 7,000 per megawatt to 3,500, at which point that cuts that down, becomes far less attractive to the county. And if we're also looking at a 5% reduction every year for the life of the project, just a lot, they said that it would be good for counties because we could budget that in and not worry about the state revaluing the project. Of course, we all, we all had, there was lots of comments made by commissioners on the call, myself included. But I tried to update these guys as well with that. Those are, those are all conversations that are taking place. I don't know what the future holds, but I appreciate the willingness of so many members of the public to come forward and talk to us about what you guys' concerns are as well. Because it sounds like the board is really wanting, when we got in the conversation, just at least to look at this. Yes, Pete?
Well, and maybe what, when Mark finds out whether or not any kind of a moratorium can be put on, anything. If it is possible, we might be able to talk about the size and everything. Related back to what Amanda said about the potential that there is an ORS about 12 or 20 acres or whatever that might be. You might be able to reference that. I don't know what. Yeah, right. But there might be some way to reference a state statute in that.
You're talking, that has reference towards irrigated farm ground?
Yeah, right, right. Because, am I right? Is that the main concern for us?
It's on the, on that high-value ag ground that's, you know, good hayland, good grazing land, good quality irrigated, you know, that good quality ag ground that's productive. If we take it out of production and we put it into something, especially the irrigated land, where it will not be irrigated again, because the state will revoke your water rights if you don't use it at least once every five years. You know, and it's compacted and it's sprayed and everything else. You're going to be left with something that is completely nonusable by the end of its life term. And so, you know, you're basically stuck with a patch of dirt. It's not soil. It's, it, the value is going to be little. It's not soil, it's, it, the value is going to be little if it's not.
I, I just kind of wanna get a census from everybody, the, the main thing is. Irrigated, high-value. That's the main thing we're looking at.
I believe so.
I think that's where the objection is at this point.
I don't think any of this is.
I will take off from what Amanda just said, and as a landowner below Rod Reesius, I also have been impacted by the water rights. And the, and Water Resources Department hasn't even addressed that aspect of it, and it's a tailwater right primarily. It comes off that property and comes on down to me. And as I had a conversation last week about four times with the, uh, attorney for Blue Marmot, they weren't even aware of that mitigation that has to be addressed. And also the water right for the well and ground on the above. And there are water right problems out there, but as addressing it from the water user's point of view. You, we provide the water, but, and it's tied to the ground, but you have to come before the board before you move any water in any shape or form from land to land or sell that water. And it has to be, be able to be delivered effectively for property that is being reused or reapplied for the water. So we have some problems that way, but yes, I would have to say that probably for the most part, it is the irrigated ag ground that we are, I'm concerned about right here. Not only as down south, but also for the water users. The land out here in the north, that's grazing land and that's marginal and who's to say what the landlord's primary use is. On leasing of it, that doesn't mean that I don't, I mean, if I wanted to have a say, I'd buy the thing from him and then I could have a say, but I can't, don't do that. So I can't dictate or say one way or the other on that aspect.
Jack, um, just curiosity on the property south of town, when there are. Areas, areas where there, was there conservation work done down there that?
There's a conservation easement, a wildlife easement sitting right in the middle of it, taking underneath the, during the Reagan administration.
Yeah.
And so you've got that part.
Very unique.
It's a very unique situation, yes. And see that one, it can be neither hayed, or it can be either hayed or grazed. Or they have a caveat in there that says you can do neither, depending upon the administration by the wildlife easement. So when you look at it from that point of view, that is going to impact and, and, uh, right now I apply the water. So that I can either hay or graze it, whichever I choose, and I usually use to the hay. But that also impacts the water down below, seeing as how it's not applicable to me any longer, and I do have a tailwater rights on that. So those are all things that aren't going to be coming out as we take more and more ground out of production. The one on Reesius, I just spoke with the lawyer and there's third, one third of that, of the lower portion of it is all that they can put solar panels on because it's hydroponic soils. On the, on the rest of it, so, and it's going to go clear over against the far side, which is near there, but. So there are, you know, at first I thought there was only gonna be the one side, now there's gonna be two sides, so we're gonna have to mitigate some things out. And the water rights are gonna have to be mitigated out, but they were not even aware of it, and the Water Resources Department didn't even take it into consideration.
And all the water rights are all regulated by the state authority?
That's correct, but that is also a problem in that the, that the state, this is moving so fast and going. So quickly in directions that not even the lawyer was aware of it for Blue Marmot, but not only that, but the state was not, was not aware of all the ramifications, what was going down. Therefore, I agree with Amanda in that maybe we gotta get a committee going, we gotta get something slowed down a little bit, if it's legally possible, I would agree. But, you know, we, we gotta get some, some input put in by producers, um, all represented, just like you said. And get something on a county level so that we are not just an advisory at the state level. We need something guiding here, because it's, this seems to be the high area that we're developing. Good, bad, I don't know, but whatever, we better have some, some, some guidance in there at the county level to say, all right. Yes, this is, we can do this over here on this sagebrush flat that's rock and soul, that isn't where they wanna put it, because it's hard to put it in there. But, and if you're gonna put it in ag land, all right, here's what we gotta have, and this is the direction we need to kind of look at. And the impacts both visual, uh, water rights, uh, neighbors, you sit there and say, well, I can't, we haven't got anything really for the neighbors, well, you, you got it. Because water rights, and I can go to the state and force it, but, you know, those are all things that even Blue Marmot hadn't taken into consideration. They're now taking them into consideration. So. But I think what Amanda's proposing at this level, we need to think about very, very seriously and move forward with. To a certain degree, whether it's the committee portion of it and find out about the legality of slowing things way down, yeah. And I don't know where you go, you made some very good points, all of you have, so, um, we've all got, you know, you find a way.
On be, on behalf of Jim Walls and L C R I, I think he would agree a hundred percent with you, Jack, on that, so, just for public comment. L C R I stands with that statement.
Any other thoughts or questions? All right, so Commissioner Albertson, you're gonna check in on the farm side. The unique, because of putting the committee together is beyond that. That doesn't have to all be decided, if we decide to put a committee together, as far as we can add more people, we can add other people. Needs to be a full round of representation to answer a lot of questions. I would like to have input from our finding director if we're gonna implement that, if it's appropriate. For the full finding commission to be part of that committee, Arthur Tim, one finding commissioner, and then the recommendation made to the finding commission to the board.
So, so what I have on here is a solar person, like you stated. Branchers or producers, uh, one county commissioner, we only have one county commissioner because of public. Meeting laws. County planner, finding commission, county attorney. A town, a lake, few representatives, so we probably want, or at least ask for a representative in Paisley and maybe in Northlake.
Absolutely.
Water users, soil water conservation, L C R I. And the extension service.
I'll make you real happy about all this law, Mike.
Really, I could. Well, these were suggestions.
Well, well, all the reasons why I say that is.
That we get our CS.
We did a pill from that.
In our C S.
In our C S, and we didn't want to have to that.
Who?
In our C S.
In our C S. And I think fish and wildlife would be a good addition because there are going to be, you know. Wildlife that are impacted by this. As much as we all.
The only problem with this is, is that. They find a fish, a frog, a salamander on your neighbor, they're gonna come and wanna see the same thing on your land.
Oh, I know.
And so this is part of the deal that I've been saying is.
It's the double-edged sword, but that's.
It is.
But they had no problem electrocuting and killing over that thousand Redbant fan trout on my creek project, so. Go put here.
It's not necessary to them that you're afraid of, that there are special interest groups that come forward, it's a thousand friends of Oregon. Whoever comes into our army practices, into our producer side of the world, and start saying, there's this big rabbit here, it's also on your land here, now you're gonna have to farm around. That's my concern. Our logic will side to the correct.
And I will tell you, a thousand friends of Oregon is watching this solar development on ag land, I have already been contacted.
They're the ones that scuffed it over.
They are the ones that scuffed it.
Yeah, yeah, so you're having a good day somewhere.
I mean, I think they did a good thing, but on the other side of it, they're pretty brat. Okay, we're not going. You're doing good, sir, you're very good.
At this, at this point, I'm going to tell you guys thank you very much, we're going to take about it, give them a break. So that if you wanna talk to any of us individually, you can, then we'll come back to the session.
That would be perfect.
Things were a political body.
So, um, we have, we have the Darwin Johnson Show next for discussion, Road Vacation Order. Alley in block three of Hager Edition. For a decision, possible decision tomorrow. And let me get to that one, go ahead, are you ready for that?
I am ready.
Darwin?
Darwin Johnson. So could I just make one comment here before you start? Just to make things simpler next time. If we're doing more than one of these at a time, can we put them in by number?
Just. Item one, item two.
Just, just to make things more simple, I can tell by the smirk on your face, Carl. We need to talk to Jay later. Okay, sorry, which one are we on?
So we're in Silver Lake, up on the screen you've got, uh, outlined in red.
The one Tammy Dark, right here in the brief.
Yeah, Tammy Dark.
Copy, got it.
Has requested, uh, paid the fees, got the title report for properties. Platted Street, of Center Street, between Ninth and Tenth Street in Silver Lake, and also the alleyway, uh, just south of, of Center Street in between lots. One through four and five through eight, uh, just south of her house there, so. Note, obviously this is, since she's the complete and only hundred percent owner of the surrounding properties to these sections of undeveloped roads.
So does she have the house on the north and south?
No, just, just this one here, th- these are also her lots though. And then there's another alleyway which, which we're not talking about right now, and then this is a different property. She is definitely just on between these four blocks.
So where, where is she going to have access for those lots?
There, there's still access on Ninth and Tenth Streets.
She's just trying to get rid of the alley between?
Yeah, this, this road is platted Center Street and the alley that's right here.
So s- platted Center Street, is there not a road there?
No, the big one right there is.
Yeah, this is, this would be Center Street, let me turn off the, maybe the red off, you see the, this is, this is a platted road.
That's, that's a platted road that's undeveloped.
It's undeveloped, but the Center Street runs parallel to the highway.
This south of the highway.
Good.
And then the, the alleyway is the one below that, right in portion of their yard.
So I, I, in the, uh, your agenda summary is, is my recommendation and report, it says that this is interior lots, uh, that, you know, fits with land use to have them vacated and. It's met the O R S, it's my recommendation to approve the vacation of these two undeveloped, platted streets.
This, this is for actually tomorrow, um, and as we've stated many times. We need to look at the, for public's best interest, and there's still ingress and regress all the way around, so I'm good myself for a decision tomorrow.
I can't read Amanda's, uh, sorry, Tammy, uh, Tommy's number, uh, letter. Yeah, Tammy, Tammy's letter, I can't read it, it's very dark, but, um.
This is her request itself?
Yeah, the actual handwritten letter that she wrote to us, I can kind of make it out.
I can read it quick.
If you could, it's real.
You know, we make a sign, sending the title report, requesting, I am, um, requesting Center Street, you make it between blocks three and two on the map. I also highlighted on the map the area you wish to be vacated.
Okay, that's, that's on there, okay.
And then on your, in your packet, it's got those highlighted that are also up on the screen.
So just for questions sake, do you, do you have to, is this, is this the only meeting on these?
Yeah, O R S, the three sixty-eight, one three five one, allows a vacation without a hearing, and so we hold it in this, in a public setting, but it's not actually. But you do make a walk order that we're gonna vacate.
Really not much left of Center Street after that.
No, really, I mean.
Is it just right there or not?
Certainly there's a way that we could, you know, kind of push these along without the property owners consent, I mean, it would probably be as we are with. The one that we talked on the eighteenth, um, for all along the highway, um, but yeah, I mean, you can see that a lot of these need to be vacated, I mean, there's just a stuff to the west. You've got a pool right in the middle of.
Well, and, and then it just goes straight into the school lot, the Purnalls, the old Silver Lake School, it continues past that though.
This is, this is happening in, in so many areas, all throughout the county, there's, there's a house across the alley.
Yeah.
You know, that obviously should.
Is that house across that?
Across there, across here, it's just, it's a constant problem in these smaller communities. Where the, the flats just don't align with the use of the properties in most cases, and most of this was, um. You know, established, you know, before, we had good mapping that really showed where these property lines were at, so building officials didn't know, oh, you don't know this realm, that's okay, yeah, but. Oh, wait, there's now. Well, you know, eventually we'll wanna clean a lot of this up and, and we will, but it, it just takes time, this is definitely a step in that direction for my property for the Darks.
So Darwin, will there be anybody here tomorrow representing this request?
No, she, I, I mentioned that you guys do like them to be on the phone or available, she's a teacher up in Westlake, so, um, she's unavailable. Um, but I did relay that message to her and she said, well, the question's pretty simple, so.
This, this one here is a little more simple than most of them.
Yeah, and I don't see how it really impacts any other travel around or anything like that, it's just a continuation of that block and, like, everything. South of the school there, or at least east of the school, I guess, um, the old Silver Lake School. There's, there's really nothing left of that road. So. I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable in line with that, I don't, I don't see that that's the way to impact anything.
Okay, are you guys good?
Yep.
For tomorrow, and that one? Next, Darwin?
That's how that looks.
That's how it works, yeah, yep, that's it.
There's nothing, we're just gonna vacate, change. All right, um, I did just text, uh, Mr. DePede, um, for the next one on the agenda, which is. A request just to vacate, um, that portion of record survey twenty-seven, which is within tax, like it's six hundred, where it's north and south. Uh, which is a sixty-foot platted Penphillips, um, easement road, um. As well as the language that's on, um, data book ninety-four, page three eighty-six, which is just. That language that says all rights are waived for county roads and highways here before designated, or which may be hereafter designated.
Perfect timing.
By the county court of Lake County, Oregon, and also Preserving, that language. Just don't. Yep, right over there on this. So before I put the highlights on, you know, this, this tax lot is, these two pivots, complete pivots there. As, and then it drops down and connects over here and, and takes in this pond, it does not take in this house, so it's outlined in black. I can outline that differently if you want me to draw it around a little bit, but we're just talking about this stretch, which is, which is an interior planted, um, road. Within this tax lot, this one tax lot.
So, and it's flowers on both sides of that?
Yes, yes, it's, it's all their property, it's one property, yeah, right there, this is all we're talking about, it's.
Where do these ones get ingress and regress from?
They, ju- just to the south, this is a platted road here, and I'll turn on.
This here.
So there's, there's what it looks like right now, these, these are the roads that are out there in this, this.
Yeah, that's the.
So they have access, um, on, on. So they have access, um, on, on their south boundary and all the way to the, you know, north corners by this and currently through there, but this is what, that portion is what they're asking.
So it wouldn't landlock anybody?
No, absolutely not. Yeah, and by law, they can't, we can't do it this way, um, without a hearing. If it were to landlock anybody.
That's right.
Certainly is not landlocked.
So is all this floweries? This here?
This is, this is, all but one of these is. I don't think this one.
But it's keeping access up there.
That's right.
And this one has access from there?
It really shows access since.
Yes, so. I don't know if this is connected, but floweries are also appealing, uh, planning use, land use.
Separate.
They're definitely not connected and we don't.
Separate piece of property. It's not connected.
Yeah, it's not. It's a few miles to the northeast.
I'm just making sure.
Yeah, good question.
So clarification, uh, welcome, Mr. Headland. Um, so the uniqueness of taking the caveat of the, the county roads and everything off of this. Uh, we don't believe there's any cost on any, uh, any of that being going through the deed in that. If there is, our policy, that cost, if there is any cost, would be burdened upon the property owner or the applicant. And at this point, we don't believe there's any additional cost, which is something I'd ask last time.
Correct.
So one question, I'm sorry, where are you at?
No, yeah, go right, yeah, sure.
Um. There, you have in quotations here, this piece of language that we're looking to have removed. Um, where it says, reserving, however, to Lake County Oregon. And then we start taking, removing the following language, all rights of way of county roads, highways there to designated or which hereafter designated by the county court of Lake County Oregon and also reserving stops. And then it continues in this language would remain, all of the coal, oil, gas, or minerals on, in, under said land and the right to take mine or make the same. So if that continues.
That's a completely separate vacation process, yeah, completely different.
Completely separate.
Yeah, that, 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 yeah. They, they may be in the same paragraph, but they're two different statutory processes.
Okay, because that was exactly where I was going and thank you for clarifying that. Because it's, it's in the exact same quotation, the exact same paragraph.
Right, but they're completely separate.
We're just removing that one section.
That's correct. This procedure would not allow for mineral rights. That is a publication procedure. And I'm not even sure it's applicable to county government.
It's, it's actually really interesting that that's even.
You, you will deal with that sometime in your career and, uh, there will be.
Career, huh?
Yeah.
My future plan, huh? You, you and my wife.
You, you will deal with that and there's quite a process for those mineral rights to be.
I've done, I have actually done it on the Penphillips reservation with a different, um, with a different client, actually. Once before and it's, uh, but I've never actually looked at the process for county. But like you said, this process is outside of that. And that is not a planning process. That is a notice of publication process. So again, I don't know that that's even applicable.
And I turned over.
We, we asked that person to, at their cost, to evaluate if there's any potential mineral there by a third party and if there is not, then we, some of our, we've kept everything.
And they've got to pay all the costs upfront, so we're taking a huge down payment from them to cover that cost.
And we're both sort of sideways for this one, but yeah, you'll, you'll probably get to deal with it.
Yeah, I.
I try, I take all the calls and I try to make sure that I can deal with that.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I just wanted to have that cleared up, that that remains. And it just seems strange that it was in the same, same section.
It was a kind of a generic, Penphillips did the same thing where they had the third, the road we're looking at, you know, the, the red, the one in red right there is their general and everything they did on, on, on section lines basically, so.
Yeah. Okay. No, I'm just, I had no, no other questions. I know we talked about this a little bit on the last meeting that I want. I couldn't remember the whole conversation. I wanted to refresh my mind.
So this is a whole new application that's been redone to, to just this one?
Sure.
Yes.
We forgot to turn the thing on after break.
I hope he's become a politician. He said, we.
It is.
Do you want to talk about me and you?
It is me.
So, so you're recorded now, so we will.
Yes.
So I just didn't know if you wanted to summarize what's happened since for you. So, so in summary, uh, we have reviewed, uh, for tomorrow's decision on the vacation and road, road and alley vacation on the Dark property.
Yeah, Tammy Dark's property.
And, uh, now we are in the process of discussion for the decision for tomorrow on the flowery property and road vacation.
And no decisions made on either?
Yeah, correct. So, um, good conversation on that other just because you will experience sometime, whether you're commissioner or not. It might be some property to buy or sell.
Looking forward to that.
Is there anything the board needs, any further information that we need from Mr. Headland or from our funding director?
I'm perfectly comfortable. I have no questions.
So the decision will be made tomorrow. Um, it's not a timed item?
I, unless you guys were, I had planned on not being there unless you guys thought, like you said, that's part of the reason we narrowed our request here, because we wanted to do with this process, I know it's summaries and without notice of the folks. So that's why we've narrowed the request to what we're asking for here. So if the commissioners are generally fine with it and you're not expecting any sort of changes in what I'm hearing here today and I don't plan on being there, but if there was something that'd come up, I'd request somebody to let me know. But otherwise, so that's why I'm going to ask, you guys have any further questions on a piece of this? Or are you basically uncomfortable with any part of what, of this narrow request, you're getting on those lines? Perfectly comfortable.
I'm uncomfortable unless something unique come up, then we would get ahold of you.
Sure. Good. And would it be about the same, probably about the same time tomorrow?
Tomorrow?
No, probably not. It would be in the morning most likely between ten and eleven, okay?
Yeah, we have a very tomorrow added, but we'll come up with a state.
And this would have to be dealt with prior to that.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
Between ten and eleven.
Right. Yeah, we should, yeah, we should be between ten and eleven. We should be able to rock it through this pretty fast tomorrow. Hopefully.
Jinx it.
Tell Jinx. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Know you're a busy man.
Okay.
All right. So Darwin Johnson, IGA with Carney County.
Thank you, so. Uh, just as an update, um, back, back information, this service is to be provided by Lane County. Um, and back in July, we ended that service with them. And when we moved to, um, doing a lot of our GAS work with Deschutes County. Primarily for tax, uh, lot, map maintenance, as, as well as the assessors have other, uh, work they have them do. This IGA is for an online mapping application, which is the service that Lane County used to provide for us at a hundred and fifty a month. Uh, Carney County is agreeing to, well, would be agreeing to this. This is a draft from them at a hundred and fifteen dollars a month for that service, which, um, if you've heard me outside of this meeting, talked a lot about what they can offer. There's multiple layers that can be added to this online, uh, service, which would then give property owners better information about their property, uh, land use, um, for zoning, uh, any habitat layers, um, you know, water or sewer lines, things like that. Can all be added to these layers. Um, and part of the other, uh, portion of this agreement would be a, a flat rate of eighty dollars per hour for additional projects that need to be done. So the service is a hundred and fifteen a month, which, which, we said that they would update on a monthly basis with the new tax out there. Uh, which, you know, currently I give you guys like a Google Earth layer every six months, which is how I've been getting from either first from Lane County and now from Deschutes County. Um, but this would be up to date information and it would be extremely helpful. Uh, and I'm very excited to see that it's less than what we've been doing for many years, um, at a different county. Uh, so, uh, this fits completely within my budget, um, for the rest of this year. Uh, I would look to have a not exceeding thirty-three hundred dollars on that first page.
Exceeding what?
Not to exceed, uh, on, on page one, um, under agreement, um, capital A, one, lowercase a. That blank line there, not to exceed thirty-three hundred would be my request. Um, because that would allow for up to twenty-four hours in the year to do additional projects. Now, I would, you know, certainly work it in my budget for me to roll that. But this would allow me to do, um, some of these long range projects that haven't been completed, such as those on the layer that needs to be up on online, which we've paid zeros so far in Carney County. They love that work through another grant for us, um, through the Sage Grants Grants. But they're just to, to allow us, and I would, I'd keep you guys aware of those budgets, but I've done a good job with my budget in years past. This year is really, um, completely, the hundred and fifteen falls within, I'm getting us through June, but then I would, I would have to make sure during our budget process that.
Back to it.
I, I go back to what was.
So Darwin, if we agree to this, or we don't see no problems with it, um, I'm trying to figure out here is the remaining up until January, then it starts a new contract, January one, what does this mean?
Yeah, the contract language goes from January first of each year, so we pro-rate, you know, the rest of November if we wanted to start now.
So is there a way to make this go until January of twenty-twenty-one instead of just?
Yeah.
I mean, twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, so that on page two, um, top of the page, it has under one, it has, um, this agreement is effective when signed by all parties and expires June thirtieth and it has a blank date. My, my request would be at least twenty-twenty-five. Uh, let's, that's one and a half years, so that gives us plenty of time to, um, look at this.
So it automatically can be.
Yeah, it would renew.
Here, easy.
Yeah, and then, and then, and it says unless extended by written in mutual agreement.
Well, it can be terminated.
Terminated, yeah, this, this covers us completely. Jim Bailey, I should have started off with Jim Bailey reviewed this and he did say, you know, fill in the blanks on these dates and things, but yeah, it looks smooth, yeah, so.
So.
How to email.
I'm outside the boundaries here of, 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 just because you mentioned that thirty-three hundred dollars. And it's not outside the boundaries. One of my things I've wanted for years here is for all of our dedicated county roads to be mapped and for that we can hand out a map to our public. These are dedicated roads, whether we own them or it's an agreement for this service. So I don't want to tie our hands at thirty-three hundred dollars. Um, that's for your department, but I would love to see our road department find a grant and pay for it. So the board commissioners has that document that shows exactly, exactly what the deed to county road is part of, under agreement. There's a lot of work to be done there. There's a lot of work to be done there and, um, this could, could be the opportunity. So I want to make sure, Darwin, that thirty-three hundred dollars, that would be a special project away from it. But I don't want to tie our hands. I've already had my spiel ready for you guys to, for the future, because if I wasn't able or I didn't do enough over my years, but that's the one.
How about if we just, the one tool of the board commissioner and the road official program? How, how about if we put, uh, the amount paid by Lake not to exceed thirty-three hundred and was otherwise approved?
Something approved, but, uh, special projects approved as well.
Yeah, special, yeah, projects.
Yeah, because there's, there is some grants, you know.
Oh, yeah, there's grants. I was going to bring that up. Carney County did, back when they were working on some land projects, um, up on the steam. They were, um, curious on how they're going to give the, the power off of the steams. And so they actually applied for a grant to do a road historian, um, Howard Palmer, who's still working with that department up there. Uh, building and planning the park. He actually went through it, went through all the commissioners' journals, kind of court journals, and figured out all that information and they mapped it and that, that map's hanging on the door in the planning office.
Well, there's the formula of state dollars also from your road system, if you're a major collector and everything. If you have all this mapped out, we may be missing out on a little bit of dollars coming in on that. I can't remember exactly what that is, but I just encourage the board to look at this as opportunity, you know, pursue it. I, I just, it's a tool that the board commissioner.
There'd be a lot of applications for this. I mean, you can be able to open inside. If there'd be grants available to, to research some of those things, I mean, having a layer that shows all the pieces of property within an area that have actual structures on them and what their value is or potential risk and everything else categorized within that document is something that our fire chiefs and can use as a tool when they triage. You're in some of these fires and things like that. Right now, they don't have that.
Well, and there's, there's a lot of this work that's been done by private sector, um, what's the maps thing for, the Mark Hunters get that.
Right, the hunting.
The markers or whatever. So I think some of the work has been done out there that can be utilized. But anyways, I just wanted to bring, take the opportunity to encourage, where it get ahold of that problem. So other than that, I thank you, Darwin, for bringing that forward unless there's other questions.
I, I think it's an excellent idea. It moves us in a good direction.
I've got this in word and I can make that a change from, you're agreeing not to exceed thirty-three hundred unless special projects approved by the board.
Correct. That's excellent. When to tell report?
Yeah, so, you know, I don't have the total number of tax lots due to us, um, just this past October.
We, we don't have anything in the package, do we?
No, unfortunately, but, but one of the things I want to discuss is we got three landowners, um, the prior landowners, three properties due to us that have residences on them, um, up and down, uh, G Street, as you live in town. And so one of those, uh, landowners has come to me and said, hey, I actually bought this property on, um, on sale, contracted for. Came in today and did share with me some of that information, um, and so I've got it for you. And I, I recommend that we continue to get a little bit more information from him. But he does have a quick claim deed that was signed in two thousand and, um, fifteen, never reported. Um, and, you know, he's showing that he's been collecting rents on the property from, from other folks, but, um, that, the deed was never reported and we've always put in his name and, um, you know, he's been made aware that, you know, it's now a county ownership, but we either. It'd be my recommendation to work with him and try to get the right information proving that he is, uh, in fact, owning and has paid the prior owner um, for this land. And then we would do as, as law requires and make him pay all the back taxes, uh, which is the sale of the prior owner and occupant of the property.
So he hasn't come in yet with that deed or?
He came in with some of that information today and I didn't get a chance yet to pass it down to you. I've scanned it all in. It has a quick claim deed with his name to him from the prior owner, which showed up on the tax rolls.
What date from that?
Um, it was a two thousand and fifteen signature, so, um.
That's.
You know, for five years, I'm not sure why this wasn't taken care of prior. Um, that's why I've asked for more information, showing some of the money that was actually transferred. Because if you can show that the money was actually transferred, then I think we should work with him. Um, you know, anybody can write a deed and have signatures, but if those might not be transferred, then really that, that prior owner, you know, lost it because they weren't paying taxes. Now, he told me that he was paying taxes directly to that prior owner and that he had just recently finished paying this off uh, with the sale of one of his properties, which I also have.
Showing that.
Yeah, and I have documentation of his other properties that we sold, um, just a few lots south of this. Um, for the amount that he, he told me that he paid off. And so, I mean, it's, it's sounding right. I just wanted to show a little bit more of proof that he.
It sounds like that if he went through the process of buying and selling, he understands the process. And he should be able to show us that he in the, uh, contract for bringing payments that included the tax.
I'm, I'm hopeful.
And if he can't show that.
We got a big issue, yeah. So hopefully, hopefully we get that resolved for you, but I, I, uh, I put Lance out there as a general topic too. And that's why you didn't get a whole lot of information. We're still working on round, have her to follow up with the request to see if I, we could get that secured. You know, um, I talked to a few contractors, none of which were able to get to it right now. Um, and, you know, going through the building just last week, I mean, I, again, realized the severity of, of that root issue that we have going on there. Um, the bigger problem I see that we have is, you know, public trust. The bigger problem I see that we have is, you know, public trust in that if we put a lot of money into this to secure it even, I mean, that, that money could be near thirty thousand easily just to secure it from falling in on itself, on the chance of it falling in on itself. I mean, there's no guarantee it's going to, it's been in that state for many years now, that's probably why the owners walked away from it, would be my assumption. But, at the price it's set at right now is thirty-three thousand and change for that property at forty percent real market value. My, my opinion and recommendation to you guys would be to continue to see who may want it, a public entity that we could donate it to, or or sell it to a nonprofit at a certain price, if that's allowed by statute, which there's limitations on that allowance. But if there's no one interested, then drop it quickly to the fifteen percent real market value, which will still cover all the back tax that we have lost over the years. But if we get it out of our hands as, as a potential liability appears to be right now.
So, are, are parameters in the Board of Commissioners, we, we can move it down to fifteen percent? That's not a problem? Our policy doesn't allow to carry a contract on that fifteen percent. Are we allowed to vary from that policy if there was a nonprofit on it at fifteen percent that we carry a contract?
You guys can vary from your policy. Legal counsel, I would say let's make sure he's on board with how we vary from your policy. We vary from our policy before, any policy currently means that we don't sell back to the prior owner, because, you know, they, they had all this time to figure it out, and now they're wasting our time. So we try not to do that, give them one more out, right? So, in this Robert Woodbrook situation, it's a little different, because he didn't have the deed recorded, although he was paying it off on contract. So, if you can prove it, then that makes sense to vary. In this case too, you know, we, we realize that's in really bad shape, and, you know, the historical part of downtown, that you want to preserve it if you can, but we're not in the business of, of improving that property if someone else wanted to.
So, so we do know that the town of Lakeview is going to take it under consideration.
They are.
At a meeting, and when is that meeting?
I'll prop it up, so Tuesday, a week from today, the town council would like to talk about it.
Okay.
Obviously, as a town council, when I had, you know, I'm kind of not sure if that's the way we want to go, but that'll be discussed at that level.
So, I'll talk individually here, I'm in favor of getting it down where it's reachable by anybody. I'm favorable of getting it into somebody that's going to do something with the property. So, whatever we move to, we'll make that happen, that would be in the best interest of the public in the town of Lakeview and your areas.
So, so what, what I would like to recommend again is that, because our policy is, and we noticed four weeks prior to a hearing, by state law, we're required to do that, publish full time in the paper and set up the auction. I would suggest we publish this, this individual property again for consecutive weeks, and then enlist it at that fifteen percent as a starting price. And then, and it's, that, that fifteen percent is like thirteen and a half. It could then get bid up, and if it get, got over twenty, we could definitely sell it on contract. The only worry about selling on contract is if it does collapse in on itself, I mean, we could end up instilling an issue, I think. It'd be best to just.
So, so if the town was interested in it, we can basically give it, gift it to them, or give them to them for all our other taxing committee. So that then makes any worry of the one fifteen percent, and if they were willing to take on as a community project, is what I'm hearing, is what we've been told. And, and so, I would like the board today to sort of give you the latitude to have that discussion in that meeting, unless one of you gets to that meeting. It's a, a, so I have to rethink that, it's awkward because you're a town council.
Yeah, it's.
And you're also our landowners, and I wasn't, I'm attending at that meeting, but you could carry that forward and still act on it. Is if consensus of the board is that town was interested, we would definitely gift it over.
What do you guys think? As long as, I assume that they're looking at what, what options they have in terms of preparing, you know, whether it's tourist dollars or whatever else, I don't know what they have available. I don't know if there's any application for some of those things, but we're, we're really.
Yeah, and well, and, and when you carry that forward, Darwin, some people think nonprofits qualify, they don't, it has to be another taxing district, right? Our taxing, and the public taxing, and so the town qualifies, so some people get those because of nonprofits or considered nonprofit, but they, they don't qualify under the law.
And that's why I said there's limitations, because there are, you know, if it was for housing projects or something, then you can fall for that. Someone to the two twenty-fourth Street property there. So you guys are now recommending we sell, and I would really notice that too, in this process, just to give you that as well. Yeah, if the town didn't want it, we do send it out and publish again for four consecutive weeks, fifteen percent, we do the same thing with that, two twenty-fourth Street property.
So I.
Because there's a lot of people interested, we just want to make sure we're being fair.
Let me keep, keep that one stuck up for me for a second.
Yeah.
Because it might be his water. If we elected to go fifteen percent, do we have to notify for four weeks? Do we have to follow up? Can we, as a board, make a decision and just say it's fifteen percent? First come, first served.
Yeah, it's, I, I bet we could, it's just a matter of, yeah, trying to make sure everybody's aware, maybe we go in one or two weeks, just to keep it aware. I mean, it's way, you know, away from our normal May meeting, our May sales.
Every day of sunshine blesses that building, every day of rain.
Right, right.
So, I just think in a timeframe.
If there's so many areas. So, if the town doesn't want it, and we go through this four-week process and nobody bids on it for fifteen percent, what's the next step?
Yeah, we would sit there until sold, we can't go lower than fifteen percent.
Unless we gave it away to them.
We could have the building official possibly, you know, condemn the building and things like that, and, you know, if we want to say, look, we, we need to make sure.
But how would that benefit us?
It wouldn't, it would not, it might not benefit us. I mean, it's, you know, there's a report that Daryl Anderson put together, it's, I believe, three hundred fifty thousand to repair that.
Three hundred thirty or something.
I heard in the meeting, when, when LCP came in here, that they, it was probably, Daryl had mentioned it was probably around thirty thousand just to secure it from collapsing on itself. So, you know, at fifteen percent, at thirteen thousand and change, if we were to sell at fifteen percent, we're going to lose money for the repairs. Put in twenty-five thousand or a dollar more, and even at thirty-three, if we were to afford it in some community day, about a forty percent.
Well, the thing is, is that, somebody put three hundred and thirty thousand into that bill, you'd never get that money. It's still worth sixty-seven.
Yeah, exactly.
I, I just thrown numbers out there. It, there, this one's unique, there is, there's very interesting for the historical value. So, there's that side of it. Myself, I would love to see it be community space of some sort myself, you know, maybe where the people could have a cup of coffee and visit outside, you know, that type of thing, but that's not our, our job. Hopefully, somebody will step up and see the boundary, and it's, or it could be the joining of businesses, if we did down to fifteen percent, I'd be interested in joining, doing a venture. I don't, hard to say. Or grants might come, you know. So, but I'll ask for consensus of the board, or if the town's interested, we have the, basically, sell it to them for all, I think that's what we're going to do. After Darwin checks with legal counsel. You guys?
Yeah.
I'm totally good with that. All right, Darwin, would you represent that side of it?
Yep.
We also understand you will be possibly acting, you're bringing that forward as the county, but you'll be acting separately as the town elected member. All right, anything else on the land sale?
Um.
And I'm sorry, I, I, you were talking, did you want to talk about the other one?
Yeah, just to mention that.
I was trying to keep them separate to keep the muddy in the waters.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I appreciate that, but, you know, your guys' directive was to, you know, that we weren't going to be donating that property away, so that, so we wanted to at least sell it. A lot of people were interested, like you said before, so I had, I want to make sure we're fair again on that. And so, someone, anyone could come in today and pay the forty percent price, but we never really auctioned it at the sixty, so it needs to be auctioned. And so I, I want to at least publish a, the state minimum for four weeks, and then, it, it'll be a small cost, we'll recoup our cost, but then the people will know that, hey, we're selling this property, and we'll get all the interest.
So uniqueness of that whole thing is we need to make sure we have the document and process.
Exactly, so I just wanted to cover our bases, and, and that's why I suggested if I did, if I, we did the old ground up tavern, we, we do it at the same time. There's, you know, with the, with the three residences I talked about before, you know, I'd love to say, hey, let's get those gone. I think in future, in the future, I will ask to change our policy, if we know there are people tenants in properties, we, we try to figure out how to resolve those as quickly as possible because they are all potential liabilities, if we've got people in them. And so, me working with Jim Bailey on the eviction processes is, is going to be key moving forward, and that's why I would suggest that we sell them quicker and get them gone off of.
Take a look down south of town, you know which properties I'm talking about, they already have lights up and things, it's pretty darn, there's probably been a pretty bunch. So, that's the process. I, Darwin, I'm, I'm back to those two properties, I would, personally, I'd like to see you start that process, the four-week process on one property right away, and basically keep them separate, I think.
Well, I think, you know, after Tuesday, I'll know, right? I mean, Tuesday, the town council, it's on our agenda, we'll talk about, and we can, we can publish this, I'm not holding any auction, but it's only one. It's, it's too late to get to the paper, well, obviously, for tomorrow, so, so we'll be, you know, have a great go.
Yeah, I guess where I was going is, I think even with the meeting that there's going to possibly be, if the town doesn't want it, there's going to be other groups that may be interested, and we may vary from the four weeks on that one.
Yeah, okay.
And the other one needs.
I can always ask, yeah, that's true.
That is where I was going, I, 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 the board, your guys' thoughts, it might be.
The other one needs to go through the process, the whole process, the four, four weeks.
But the other one, we may, after your, the town council meeting, we may vary from our policy even to go fifteen percent and get rid of it right away, or whatever our latitude is. Or we may decide to advertise that on two weeks. Just because of the need for that one to be secured is different from the, I'm sort of, pretty, perfectly, perfectly fine with that.
Thank you, we have tomorrow a lot of other stuff, but I think that's it for me.
That's it for you? All right, the Darwin show to be continued.
To be continued, yeah.
So, the next one is the transport vehicle, Melanie has this all prepared for us. I don't know if she got a chance to talk to you individually, she went through the process of, this is for the sheriff's side, jail site. And she went through the process, went through the post, and directing them to do that for tomorrow. Quote of thirty-eight to forty, and it's three cents progression forward in their part of the estate pool. And you can see the difference in expense from the post, so that will be for tomorrow. Any questions, like an answer on that, or anything?
Nope.
Good with that.
Nope, I'm more than comfortable with the recommended purchase.
Okay, she's, she's, it was a four thousand, but. There's a victory present. Yeah. The next would be Melanie also will depredation compensation committee, we have an application for tomorrow. Unfortunately, one of our members has passed and we're replacing a member and recommendation for Steve Anderson, we have a letter and everything, take under consideration.
That's not Steve Anderson's.
Yep. So, what about the Nick Johnson? That is.
So that's for.
That's on the different.
Yeah, sorry.
So that's, so that's for the Wolf Committee, who, who passed away on? Mr. Crowe, Mr. Crowe. And, and your committee has to have a different representation, so it's a lot that Steve Anderson would be taking up, is not pro-Wolf, but somebody that is representing Wolf itself. I can't remember what, Melanie appeared to tell me, but there's guidelines that our committee has to set up.
Yeah, and each person has a piece that they're to be representing.
And he's at the slot.
Yeah.
Recommended and supported by.
And this letter was appropriate, I thought it was good, so.
So then we have the college, the five-year board applications.
Yes.
Did you have something else on that?
I was curious, just a question on that, can we approve these today?
Sure, we can.
Maybe just to get them off our plate for tomorrow, because I know that we're going to have a very interesting day tomorrow.
And today wasn't.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Well, I figure, we're one of us now, and we're here, so.
In the interest.
In, in just time for.
Absolutely, I.
We have a full slate.
Absolutely, it'll clean up some for tomorrow, and we'll just make our agenda. So, I would entertain a motion on the Wolf Depredation.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for, uh, from Steve Anderson for Wolf Committee.
Second, motion's been made in second, and to appoint Steve Anderson to the Wolf Depredation Conversation Committee. Further discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries next, and we'd like to act on these next two also, college advisory board applications, and James, who, you know? Nick Johnson and Jack Thompson is accurate.
I have Jack Thompson.
Yeah, Jack Thompson, Nick is with LCR.
Right.
It's for the community college.
Well, 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 this points that he's going to be with the Community College Advisory Board, and same thing with Jack Thompson.
Yep.
Both of them are, just, just throwing this out there, both of them have brought a lot of really good questions to the committee, and, you know, in the discussions that we've been having in the KCC, very good points of view, and I really appreciate their involvement in this, I just think they'd be really good to have on that committee.
And for those of you that's too old and trigger tree, where I'm not, he gave out full size, he was the bar, Mr. Thompson.
Can we have that?
My, my southern law said, best Halloween ever. So you want to do these one at a time?
Uh, I think that's mental health, you can appoint both of them at the same time on mental health in the next one.
Will you call us, the next one?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept Nicholas Johnson and Jack Thompson's application for Lake County, actually, the county community college advisory board.
For a second, the motion is that Jack Thompson and Nicholas Johnson.
Motion's been made in second, and deploy the point, Nicholas Johnson and Jack Thompson to the Community College Advisory Board, further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now we have one application for the Mental Health Advisory Board, Charlie Tracy.
Really liked her letter. You know, it's just a, it's just a comment that she put in there in answering the two questions, and that was, just a piece of. I like her reasoning, and I think she, she'll be a good voice, I, I really enjoy speaking with her at every opportunity, when she's delivering papers or anything else. So I just think that she'll be a good, good voice from the community ultimately to have on that.
That was reported. Yeah, she, she had a previous history of the, just a lot there. Yeah, and I'm, I'm looking, she rep, I don't know which part she's going to represent, but she would bring, she wound. some rounded knowledge to.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion to accept Charlie Tracy's application to the Lake District Home Center Mental Health Advisory.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to accept Charlie Tracy's application to the mental health department. Further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. With that, follow up, I believe if I missed anything, I think we got it all for tomorrow. We will adjust the agenda for tomorrow. I think that I always have had somewhat of a conversation or some kind of connection with Melanie. I believe that she should be and would be off probably the rest of the week. It's been hard for her to not be here. This is sort of her celebration and just to let you know that's why I anticipate.
It's a perfect complaint.
Yeah. So tomorrow, tomorrow we will get everything set up that we need. Ask for anything that we need. We have a hearing process tomorrow is legal counsel, if you may contact legal counsel tomorrow.
You better be.
I have not.
Okay.
All of us asked that when we talked to. We have a hearing at eleven, we have a hearing at one. Yes, all of them are built to a.
He's aware. I know. He's, but he's still lighting the green. Yes. The, for the audience that can't tell, Mark is flashing lights and.
I'm just trying to clarify that.
She's losing the fast.
Anyway. Oh, Mr. Gibson.
What are you doing?
Hey, you look like Helms Buster.
Yeah, I kind of feel that way. It's kind of fun because I go into the bank and I say I want money. It's the only time you can go to a bank, you have a mask on and ask for money. Yeah, you go, hit alarms or nothing, you know. How are you doing, right? We're doing very good. Last term or are you going to go and tell your wife?
I have one month, twenty-seven days.
I can't figure you out.
Yeah, 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 then I'm going to sit back and I'm going to come to public meetings, harass the board.
They deserve it. Look at those guys. Hi, good to see you.
Good to see you. So you're, just to follow up for today's meeting, you're going to, I think, be appropriate to any one of us, for all three of us to talk, even if you pay the deal on more regarding that discussion. I'm all ready to speak individually for tomorrow if you have, either one of you have pulled together the boilerplate to organize and committing to look at things. I think, I think we as a board prior to your time or even during the time, we probably should have done this at some point. So I'm comfortable with actually not napping tomorrow myself.
It's fine.
I would really encourage you to bring that forward to work with the planning director and find out what worked because I think that's the main part of the committee to make direct. It needs to go to them, recommend to us, so.
Planning director was on, her recommendations were personal to you.
So anyways, that for tomorrow, so if we'd like to put that as an addition, make sure that we note that tomorrow at the beginning of the meeting would be good. I don't think I have anything on through capture, like capture point.
No, I think that's actually very, very good.
Okay. You're not here for the meeting?
No, I just came by to say hi. I just dropped off my thing.
Okay, we will adjourn at fifteen.